...supposed to for the bombs to activate. And if those bombs had activated, there would be four dead police officers and they would be on the wall, the memorial wall. And fortunately, through the grace of God, those bombs did not explode. So that would be the request. Thank you, Mr. Weiss, for your comments on this. And, Mr. President, I hope this is unanimous vote to show our support for the men and women who protect us and risk their lives every day for the people of this city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. With that, we'll go ahead and open the roll on this resolution. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Ten ayes, that is approved. Thank you.
The approval to move forward on the construction of a new fire station that would be located on Hollywood Boulevard was before your Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, April 16th. Members of the public were given an opportunity to be heard prior to a vote on the matter.
The Hollywood Hills has one of the worst response times in the city for fire services. Relocating Fire Station 82 to Hollywood Boulevard and Van S Avenue, a quarter mile further away, will increase response time. The major purpose stated repeatedly in all documents relating to Proposition F is improve response time. It is stated twice in the ballot summary, once on the description on the ballot, and three times in the body of the measure. It is also stated four times in the arguments in favor and twice in the rebuttal to the arguments against that were selected by the city clerk to appear in the ballot handbook. Just last month, we were bombarded with Proposition S television commercials featuring Fire Chief Douglas Barry, in which he states, quote, "Every second counts. It's all about response time," end quote. But now, the fire department is arguing that since most calls are to the southeast, that the station should be relocated in that direction. This is a fallacious argument. People do not suffer harm on a probabilistic basis. We all burn, bleed, and suffer at the same rate. We all deserve adequate response time. It was also suggested that we should settle for worse response time because then there would be extra money for Fire Station 76. But this is not 76's bond measure. The voters are told that this is for 82. Proposition F states, quote, "Once project completion for all projects is assured," end quote. This means that we must have improved response time first, even if we have to use all the funds. Cost rose because the oversight committees botched handling. Even though the oversight committee was well aware of the sole purpose for relocating a site, they fumbled repeatedly. They purchased two sites that violated law and then they halted acquisition of Florentine Gardens Site.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, we have the two-minute clock to stay as fair as possible, but we let folks finish their sentence and their thoughts. So, thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony.
Very early, Ken.
Okay. If there's anything written you'd like to turn in, just give it to one of the sergeants at arms.
Attorney Counsel.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Larry Marx is our next speaker. After that is Ms. Kelly. Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning, Mr. President. My name is Larry Marx and I'm the president of the Beechwood Canyon Neighborhood Association. Our membership consists of about 300 homes in the Beechwood Canyon, which is one of the several Hollywood Hills communities that are served by Fire Station 82. The avowed purpose of Proposition F was to improve fire department response times to areas where such response times exceeded the fire department's own standards. I think we've all lost sight of the second half of that sentence. According to the fire department's own figures, Station 82's response times to 90% of the area it serves meet or exceed the fire department's own guidelines. The only areas served by Fire Station 82 where its response times are longer than those guidelines are the Hollywood Hills communities, such as the Dells, the Oaks, Mulholland and the Seine, and Bronson Canyon and Beechwood Canyon. Yet the new location proposed for Fire Station 82 moves the firefighting facilities further away from these areas. The argument is being made that the proposed relocation of Fire Station 82 will improve response time to almost all of the areas served by the station. This argument is dishonest. The areas where response times will be improved are already meeting the fire department's standards. The proposed relocation will only worsen an existing service problem to the more distant hillside areas. We believe that if the city council is truly interested in improving the fire department's capability to fight fires, and if the city council is truly interested in protecting the lives, homes, and properties of all of its citizens and voters, the city council will reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Ms. Kelly.
We have informed the city departments on many occasions over the years that we oppose any plan that moves firefighters away from hillside homes. Every neighborhood inside Fire Station 82's service area enjoys emergency response time of less than five minutes, except the Hollywood Hills. Prop F is clear when it promises that relocation of the fire station will improve response time. How does this plan do that exactly? We have a solution to the problem. Any new facility that is built for the components of a regional fire station, such as apparatus, storage, firefighter training, community meetings, et cetera, go forward with the current proposed plan to refurbish and redesign existing stations, keeping our firefighters there in the area closest to the hills. They're doing a fine job now where they are and could certainly use a more up-to-date facility. If they are moved further away to a location in gridlocked traffic, isn't this an unnecessary gamble with the lives and property of the people in the Hollywood Hills? We request that you take no action on this matter until the issue has been reviewed and heard before the area planning commission. Thank you.
District Four Councilmember Tom Lavon stands to explain the details of the Fire Station project.
Members, this has been a multiple-year project. As you know, shortly after six years, we have come up with a site. It is basically 500 feet from its existing site on Bronson Avenue, 500 feet. And I'm looking at all the neighbors there, 500 feet. I don't see any disagreement with that. It's 500 feet from that. And furthermore, too, if there is any salary savings, you bet we're going to try to use water and power land and relocate a station that will better serve the north in a Beechwood Canyon as well. I asked for an aye vote. I thank the Bureau of Engineering for the tremendous job they've done over the years, and the fire department. But most important, the people of all of Los Angeles have voted for this proposition that has allowed us to have new fire stations in districts throughout the city of Los Angeles. Aye, along with you, Mr. Garcetti, would love to have seen a large lot, similar to what other council districts have had, but we know the property in Hollywood is challenged, the cost factor, as well as we didn't want to relocate any housing. This will give the fire department a quick response to all of its district, and I ask for an aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lavon. As our last speaker on the queue, so let's go ahead and open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
And joining us now by phone is Los Angeles City Councilmember Tom Lavon. Mr. Lavon, always good to have you on Council Week in Review.
Hey, Jack, call me Tom.
Okay, Tom, we've known each other a long time.
That's right.
Public safety, of course, a concern to all Angelenos. More police, fire facilities, certainly welcome, but we've just seen a few of your constituents expressing concern about the location and the response times for Station 82.
Well, I think there's a little dispute. The station actually is being moved 500 feet southeasterly of what its location is on Bronson Avenue over to Van S. They will continue to have good service from the fine fire crew at Station 82 once the station is built. Jack, as you know, Hollywood, being an old KFWB man, is very dense, and I didn't want to take out any housing. We were limited in the number of parcels we could put together. This will be a very fine station to serve all of this community in the fire company 82's district.
Of course, this project has been under at least consideration for some time. Projects like this have to be scrutinized for a lot of reasons, but why do so many needed facilities take so long, sometimes years, before their completion around here?
Well, this particular project here, it was first suggested, which I suggested, that it'd go towards Garfield, which is closer to Western Avenue. There was some fine print in the original bond proposition that talked about how much space you need, and there wasn't enough space even at Garfield. So we did alter, thanks to the voters of Los Angeles, the space requirement for regional stations as it relates to Station 82, and it just took that long. It's unfortunate, but it's going to be a great new facility. Some people are happy, some people are not happy, but I'm not, without doubt, no one's service is diminished by this 500-foot move.
Of course, the Los Angeles Fire Department has an incredible history, a lot of historic stations in your district. Give us a little of the history of Fire Station 82, if you would.
Well, Fire Station 82 was built in the early 50s after the war. It's a single-door firehouse. The crew primarily serves the Beechwood Canyon area, the Los Feliz Oaks area, some part of Los Feliz, the stage, first responders into Griffith Park. They also serve the heart of Hollywood and past Vine Street, and as far south is the area around KTLA and the studios down on Sunset Boulevard, the new high school where Fox used to be Metro Media Square, Helen Bernstein High School, in the area, basically between Hollywood Hills and as far south is Sunset to Long Creek area, and then in between, say, Hobart and as far west is Vine Street.
Of course, anyone who's been in your council office knows that you've got quite a bit of the history and the memorabilia of the fire department right there. You're really a buff.
Well, I know. I have a little dalmatian in my butt, Jack. I remember, you know, it's funny, we talk about this coming up here in a couple of weeks, will be the first anniversary of the Griffith Park fire of 2007, May 8th. I remember as a kid in 1961, when much of the western sector of Griffith Park, including several homes were lost in the Beechwood Canyon, Mount Lee area. And I remember driving with my dad and my brothers, and, oh, and it may have been 82's. I can't swear it was, but back then, the firefighters rode on the tailboard of the truck and they turned left northbound on Western Avenue and right by McLaure High School, and one of the firefighters' helmets slipped off the truck. And my dad pulled over and picked it up, and we caught up to them. They were not on emergency response, but it was during that period of the fire crisis there, and returned the helmet. So 82's is a great house. It's right next to the Hollywood Freeway, and it deserves a new house to serve the people in a stronger way.
You mentioned a few moments ago, the new station is being built not with city general funds, but with Prop F bond funds. Remind our viewers about Prop F and what other projects we might see coming from it.
Well, this is towards the tail end of Prop F. You've already seen the great improvements of many fire stations throughout the city, including those in West Los Angeles area. There's a new station out on Venice Boulevard, replacing an old station, kind of like old 82, similar design. When you look at the city's history, you can look at a period of time in architecture, how they designed stations. A previous bond, which rebuilt, let's say, Station 56 in Silverlake, replaced a station that was built in Silverlake, which still stands, the building, it's historic monument number 338. Old Fire Station 56 on Rowena, 2838 Rowena Avenue, which is a great restaurant, the Eden Dale Grill, and they've converted the Old Bay where the engine stood to a tremendous area, as well as the dining is where the sleeping quarters are now. That was a period in the 1920s, and that firehouse has been retained and restored. The new station was occupied in the early 90s, but that is almost too small now. They have an engine, a paramedic, and the heavy rescue, 56, which is a citywide apparatus. But now the new stations, thanks to Prop F, are much larger sites for training, for regional training, so companies could stay in service and not have to go downtown to Frank Hotchkins by Dodger Stadium to train, but train on their own sites. Then if they do get a response, we're able to pull on their turnouts and put on their boots and jump on their engines and respond to the area. In the Hollywood, in the, excuse me, in the San Fernando Valley, the new airport facility for the air operations for LAFD is supposed to be dedicated later in May. Also, a new facility later this year, Fire Station 4, which will include a dispatch center down here in the Civic Center, is a brand-new station. Out in the East San Fernando Valley, 74's, 83's, and, see, a whole bunch of stations have been built for that. I'm trying to get one more built, too, Station 76, which is in the Coinga Pass, which is, they open the door, they're right, the engine, the bumper is right in traffic there, and it needs a new location, and we got a spot in the Hollywood Hills, but we still have much community work in process to do before we move ahead on it.
Yeah, no question about that. Prop F bond money may be used to build Fire Station 82, but of course, the staffing has to come out of the city general fund. Do we have the personnel currently? I assume we'd need more firefighters, and of course, this is a time of tremendous budget crisis.
Well, this particular time, this station, if they broke ground tomorrow, it'd still be probably 36 months before it's complete construction, et cetera. It still has some environmental work to go. They expect to break ground in the fall, you know, and maybe it's a 24-month construction schedule, but still, that's time away. They will always take the existing staffing from 82, the men and women who are currently assigned there, and just transfer them 500 feet away to the new station. We will still retain the old station site because it also serves as a place to locate apparatus for backup, and also, the site's so important, Jack, as you know this from your days in the field, the fire companies do get dispatches, about 105 fire companies, engines, and truck companies in the city. And in high hazard days, they will pre-deploy staffing, and there may be no fire happening, but they'll be coming up to Hollywood and sitting there waiting for the big alarm that may hit the Hollywood Hills Griffith Park area or Allegiant Park. Or when it's heavy winds, they'll do the same thing in the valley. They'll bust up into, let's say, Engine 66, Truck 66. Truck 66 will stay down there on Saucet in South Los Angeles, but the engine will come up and assist, let's say, Engine 82 and others that are pre-deployed. There's a science to their wonderful service that they provide to people of Los Angeles.
Well, you mentioned the future use of the old Fire Station 82. What are their uses planned for the new site?
Well, there's a community room that's going to be built there. There's quarters for the firefighters. There's a lower level there because the site is so small, and it is a small area for their apparatus in the rear. You know, the old ways, how they used to back in off the street, this will have a drive-through capability. It is there, a very busy intersection. There will be signalized control. There'll be some street improvement to make it easier to get on the Hollywood Freeway. You know, one thing, when that big red fire truck comes out of the street, people do get out of the way, and if there's an alarm up Beechwood Canyon, because some of the residents who you heard were concerned about Beechwood Canyon, they will get there faster than they would if they rolled out of 1800 North Bronson at their present location, had to go up to Franklin, weave through traffic by the commerce there of all that shops along Franklin Avenue there, and then get into Beechwood Canyon. The new station, they'll roll out the front door, hang a right, they'll get on the Hollywood Freeway, and in 20 seconds, they'll be up Beechwood, because the off-ramp is right next to, and the on-ramp is right next to the new station. All this works in the favor of the community.
Speaking of which, and finally, in about a minute that we have left, give us an update on the restoration of Griffith Park itself.
Well, first and foremost, if everybody gets a chance, go up to the observatory, come some morning, any day of the week, take a hike. The flowers are unbelievable, the wildflowers, unbelievable, the mustard, which native plant society, people will tell you, they're non-native, but it's all like Los Angeles, we're all non-native to this beautiful city of the angels, just are completely covering the burn area. They've kept back strong. Other plant, there's this purple plant, I got to get its name, Jack, but it reminds you like the Laker colors, you know, the purple and gold with that mustard. It's very pretty, it's a good hike. The park is coming back well, the restoration is happening naturally.
District Four Councilmember Tom Lavon telling everybody to take a hike, and he means it. Tom, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Oh, Jack, you know that. Thank you. Hike for health.
The vote for the Hollywood Hills Fire Station 82 project to move forward was unanimously approved. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., and Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending April 18th, 2008. On behalf of Paul Townsend and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
The city of Los Angeles.
There is an Amber Alert.
When duty calls, the LAPD responds.
We have positive on the alert vehicle.
Mamas, it is diaz.
I don't have a key.
Espera.
Espera.
Open line and one line, fighting, arguing, running background.
To protect and to serve.
Está lastimado?
No.
¿Cuántas personas hay aquí?
Mi hermano está en el baño y mi esposo está ahí.
Pon las manos arriba, por favor.
Parece.
Okay, tell me what happened.
I insisted that he stay there.
Tengo aquí un mes, no está pagando renta.
Parece que chocó con la pared.
Do you want to make a report?
No.
Brother-in-law doesn't want you staying there anymore. You all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Standing with our community.
When we first got there, I didn't know what the heck we had.
16253, unknown trouble. Male and female arguing inside of a green vehicle stopped on the Sixth Street Bridge. Respondent call three. Any area in command, I'll call.
Leave us alone!
Remember, he's got a gun.
16253, requesting backup. 419, we're on the Sixth Street Bridge facing westbound.
Hello. All right, show me in route.
For the officers of the LAPD, it's all in a day's work. Working as a team, they take pride in what they do.
The phone just got called, we got there, it's a police situation. We're waiting for your line.
I'm not coming out of the car!
Okay, listen, we've got time to work this out.
Shut up!
Let's just talk right now.
It has nothing to do with you, man!
I know you're upset. I want you to talk.
The little girl that's missing? What is your name, sir? Hello? Hello? Hello?
The caller's DOA.
Get away from the car! Shoot her! I'm gonna kill her, man!
Listen to me. Why'd you just let her go?
Girl's coming out.
Hey, John, hold the gun, buddy.
Become a part of the team. The LAPD is hiring. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Your city, your channel.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 22nd, 2008. We are here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I'd like to welcome those folks who have joined us here in Council Chambers. A very happy Earth Day to everybody. And we also want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35. If you would like to do something to improve your carbon footprint, you can always listen to us online instead of coming to City Hall, or watch us on TV. We are available at la-city.org through webcasts and also archives of our old meetings. Also can be caught through your telephone by calling Council Phone. That number is 213-621-CITY. And you can listen to any of the City Council meetings, or any of our committee meetings, through your telephone. We have Council members Alarcon, Gruel, Weezer, Perry, and Zine here, with myself. That's six members. We're expecting four more to constitute two-thirds of our body in a quorum. Pursuant to Council rules, all Council members should be here at 10:00 a.m. in Council Chambers, so if we can ask that following Council members to please join us as soon as possible. Councilmember Cardenas, Councilwoman Han, Councilmember Labange, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Wesson. Mr. Weiss and Mr. Parks are excused today. Otherwise, we're expecting everybody in chambers again. If Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Han, Mr. Labange, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Wesson will please join us as soon as possible. Our agendas are available online 72 hours in advance and at the City Clerk's Office. They're also here in Council Chambers 24 hours in advance for special agenda items. If you'd like to be heard, all items receive a public hearing either in committee or here in council. If they've already received one in committee, it requires a Council member to reopen the public hearing to hear public comment. But a desire from a member of the public to have a hearing on any item that is not received, a hearing in committee, can be done by filling out a speaker card in the back. We'd be happy to hear your comments on any items that have not yet been heard in committee. Just hand that to one of the sergeants-at-arms with the number that you'd like to be heard on, and we'll make sure that we call on you at the appropriate time. We also have a part of our agenda called General Public Comment for items that are not on the agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the City Council. If you'd like to be heard for two minutes on any of those items, please fill out a speaker card in the back as well, hand that to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we will hear your general public comment. We are going to make a second quorum call for Councilmember Cardenas, Councilwoman Han, Councilmember Labange, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Wesson. Again, if you'll please make your way down as soon as possible, so we can begin our meeting. And in the meantime, thank you all for your patience, and we will begin shortly.
There was a wall made of stones. It curved like...
All right, Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. And a reminder for tomorrow, tomorrow is Denim Day. Mr. Labange is leading the way by helping us out a day early, but for everybody in the city of Los Angeles, we will be wearing denim tomorrow to commemorate Denim Day, which has turned into an awareness day about sexual violence throughout the world, but particularly at Los Angeles, we have done this every year annually, so we wanted to remind everybody about that. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Perry moves, Mr. Smith seconds. Those minutes will be approved without objection. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weezer moves, and Mr. Alarcon seconds without objection. Those are approved.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
All righty, if we can ask Mr. Alarcon, will you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and if I can ask everybody to rise for a traditional salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end, infinite and eternal.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda, we'll come back for that.
Item one is a proposed sewer improvement assessment notice for public hearing. Council should close the hearing and continue the matter to May 13th.
Okay, any objection to closing the hearing on item one, continuing that till the 13th of May? Seeing none, so ordered. Next items?
Items two through 15 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, I'll call six special, myself, and 15 with 19 for Ms. Perry. We're not on 19 yet, but we'll call that special. Other specials, colleagues? Mr. Labange? Nope. Ms. Gruel? No other specials, okay? If we can take up the balance, please open the roll.
Mr. President, items two in this section is an ordinance. Do you wish to hold that?
Okay, yeah, let's hold that till we get 12 members. So that would leave us with three through 14, with the exception of six. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Items 16 through 29 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, if we can link 19 and 15 together, we'll take those up with Ms. Perry and myself. If we can hold the ordinances as well until we have 12 members. Other specials, Mr. Labange? Oh, sorry, I keep thinking you're calling something special.
Special introduction in a moment.
Oh, special introduction. Okay, go ahead, make the introduction.
Thank you, members of council hosted by L.A. Inc., our Visitors Bureau. Please welcome from Brazil, Auckland, New Zealand, San Paulo, San Salvador, Bahia, Brazil, Auckland, New Zealand, Taipei, Taiwan, and Berlin, Germany, our host journalists who are here writing about Los Angeles. There are members of the press, the major metropolitan newspapers are there, and they're writing about the city of Los Angeles as Sister City program, and also the general health and welfare of the great city of angels. Please give them a big welcome.
Thank you very much. We can actually take the ordinances as well on these items. Any specials, colleagues? Besides 16 through 29, we're on right now, 16 through 29. And do we have cards from the public on?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on item 23, 25, 26, and 29.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public. On the others, we will open and close the public hearing. If there are no other special items, let's go ahead and open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. If we can take up number two again. If nobody wishes to call that special, we have 12 members now for an ordinance. And go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Items 30 and 31 are the closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold those on the desk.
On the supplemental agenda, items 32 and 33 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on both those matters.
We'll call those special for cards from the public. If we can recess the regular meeting, call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Items 34 and 35 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on both those matters.
Okay. We'll call 34 and 35, correct, okay. We will call this special for cards from the public. And I'm sorry, Ms. Gruel?
Thirty-four and 35, I know Mr. Alarcon.
Okay, and we'll put those down as well for Gruel and Alarcon as well. And if we can continue those back into the regular agenda, please.
And you wish to adjourn the special meeting?
Yes, please. We'll take up general public comment now. This is for items that are under the jurisdiction of the City Council but not on the agenda today. I'd like to start with Lucille Saunders for the Melrose Neighborhood Association, and after that will be Skye Anderson. And if I can ask everybody to please direct their attention to our public speakers, and we'll have two minutes each, and a little clock there to help you guide your comments. Good morning.
Good morning. The Melrose Neighborhood Association wants to bring to your attention the reality versus the illusion of public input into the processes, especially today, into the general framework of the housing element. You've received our paper, our other material on this, but I'd like to talk with you about the process of the systemic and systematic disenfranchisement of public input into these processes. First of all, I'd like to direct your attention to the late invitations, and I was the only one who received an invitation from the Melrose Neighborhood Association. This is for seven community meetings to be held within two weeks, and the comment period is to be over by the 30th of April. However, this is the community comment section that's invited, one-third of a piece of paper. The draft which was passed out at the meeting, the draft report, which you will receive a copy, on page seven reports the community input meetings as already being held, and it looks as though community input has already been considered. There is a 225-page draft report to which we were referred on the website, and a over 700 pages of an appendix, which is not available to the public. When our board went over this, because we got it, this was the part for our section.
Thank you. If there's anything else you'd like to submit, we'll be happy to take it to one of the sergeant-at-arms. We appreciate very much.
You have my...
The letter.
You have our information.
Thank you very much. Skye Anderson is our next speaker. After that will be Zuma Dog. Good morning, Mr. Anderson.
Hi, I'm Skye Anderson, resident of Los Angeles for eight years, and I'm a community activist. I think Ms. Perry has a very nice hat on. She has really good taste in her hats she gets. To... I want to thank the City Council for passing the gang measure and turning the authority over to the mayor. I think that's going to save a lot of innocent people from being killed, and I think it took a lot of courage for them to do that, a lot of self-sacrifice for them to do that. It's a great gesture on the City Council's part. It shows they're genuinely interested in the fairness of the public. Particularly, I want to thank Eric Garcetti. About a year ago, I complained that the Hollywood Boulevard sidewalk in front of the Chinese Theater was being shut down consistently from publicized movies. I didn't think that was fair, because the sidewalk belonged to the public. Mr. Garcetti agreed with me, and today, the third tourist train in Hollywood Boulevard around Highland and Hollywood Boulevard is thriving. Sometimes you can hardly walk on the sidewalk, it's so busy. I have a photograph exhibit at the Hollywood Library of the entertainers and look-alikes and the neon signs on Hollywood Boulevard. It's going to be there at the end of April. I'd like to get a picture of Mr. Garcetti standing next to Superman or Wonder Woman or Meryl Monroe look-alike, because I think it would help the community and help him. So I talked to Julie Wong about setting up an appointment to do that. He just took his head sitting and agreed. The fourth issue is hut housing here in Los Angeles. It's controlled. Anyone who has a complaint has to go to California Cordell, and they're absolutely useless. They won't do anything. I applied to Hollywood Knickerbocker, and they lied to me and abused me, and I got angry and protested, and now they say I can't get in there because of my attitude and my behavior. Well, I've heard from an expert that 95% to 97% of the people living there are Russian. They have a Russian restaurant in there, and if they don't want anyone else, what better way could they do it than to abuse someone, and then they complain, say that their attitude is bad. Mr. Goodrich is in charge of the G and K management, many does that, and as far as I'm concerned, he's just ruthless. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anderson. Mr. Anderson, we appreciate your comments today. Zuma Dog is our next speaker. After that, we'll go out to Van Nuys for Donna Pearman. Good morning, Mr. Dog.
Yes, good morning. Zuma Dog from zumatimes.com, where I post a lot of things for everybody here to read, recaps of the meeting, to try to help keep you informed. And also, breaking news, I understand somebody just contacted me to tell me regarding LAUSD that, I can't even imagine this, but knowing LAUSD, it's possible they're going to remove the special needs kids out of LAUSD and pick up the tab to push them aside into private schools. Look into that, I just heard it. That's outrageous, and I'm sure we'll hear much more about that if that's true. Also, I'd like to talk about what I consider to be the biggest public threat to public safety in the city of Los Angeles, Mayor Antonio Villarosa, who I have been contacted by people, I understand he's a vindictive mayor who retaliates against people here in City Hall, threatens their jobs, and people are just scared in fear in the city. He holds the budget cuts over their heads and uses it for political gain and retaliation, and people are just scared to death. And I thank you, and I'm bringing that to the attention. Also, you can't think of Mayor Antonio Villarosa without thinking about the nonprofit abuse and affordable housing rackets and scandals that rob the coffers and don't allow the citizens and constituents to get the services. And of course, now I will bring up the kryptonite of Mayor Antonio Villarosa. I'm going to dump a big bucket of water on the wicked witch of the West, and I'm going to say, the talk show hosts want Mayor Antonio to overturn Special 40. They want him to adopt the Council Zine's motion. I'd settle for him saying what his position is. I challenge Mayor Antonio Villarosa, it's the biggest issue in the city. I know you're all over the country bragging on the Charlie Rose Show, you're campaigning for Hillary Clinton, you don't know what's going on in the city. I would like the mayor to come out and give an opinion. What is his opinion on the need for these reforms and the motions and Jamil's Law? I'll settle for the mayor to state an opinion. He won't, that's kryptonite, he knows it. He's here to represent the other side of the fence.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. Donna Pearman is our next speaker out in Van Nuys. Good morning, Ms. Pearman.
Good morning, Mr. Garcetti. Anyway, I want to know why the city's talking about renegotiating the city's hard-worth pot-for-pay increase. No, you don't renegotiate for lowering their pay. How about increasing them up to the DWP salary? You wouldn't renegotiate your newest raise. It's not right to cut back on your... How about cutting back on your cash cow, the CRA? We wouldn't have a deficit if the CRA didn't take it all. But you don't list them on your budget. No way are you going to renegotiate salary of the hard-working city employees. No way are you going to reduce days or have unpaid days off. How about the City Council taking days off without pay? How about we renegotiate your newest pay raise? You talk about mandatory unpaid days off or work weeks, reducing work weeks for city employees. Of course, not for your cash cow, the CRA, they make a great stake. With their blank check given to them by the City Council. How about the City Council not getting paid during recess? Doc City Council members for being late, or make them make the other meeting earlier. Let's add up all the excuses they give for not being here on city business. And also, I'm now happy about all these fee hikes and cutbacks. Trash fee was bad enough, but the hike from $11 to $28, now it's up to $36, $32. They make up those silly trash cans now we have pay through the nose. We talk about having a dollar an hour on parking lots and meters going up to $4 an hour, who won't want to stop casually to buy when you have a dollar or more? And they'll put police impound release fee, 48 to 100, and you have your library fee, and you have the zoos going up, and capside fees from $5 to $13, and swimming fees at $18 for organized sports and parks. And in the meantime, the CRA is using up all our money. Let's get rid of the CRA. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pearman. Olga Hall is our next speaker here in Council Chambers. After that, we'll go back to Van Nuys, and Sharon Brewer will follow Ms. Hall. Good morning.
Good morning. I quote, "Tell a lie loud enough and long enough, and people will believe it." Last September 2007, a press conference was staged by Mayor and Councilman Weezer, Autry National Center and their group. This press conference was held in secrecy and by invitation only. If your name was in the list, you could attend the conference. If it wasn't, two guards were present to stop you. Non-members of the community, of the Friends of the Southwest Museum Coalition, who supported the protection of the Southwest as the full-fledged world-renowned museum in its original location, were invited. The huge victory is nothing less than zero. It is a memo that cannot be enforced, a memo that Councilman Weezer and Mayor Villarosa, both lawyers, know very well it cannot stand in court. It doesn't have Mrs. Autry's signature, who by the way was present at this press conference, and she is part of this deception to the public. The memo means zero. The huge victory means zero. At this press conference, it was announced the formation of a Southwest Society, a Blue Ribbon Committee, created to help raise funds to restore and revitalize the Southwest Museum and Casa de Adobe. More than six months have passed, and they have not raised any funds to this date. Are they a political pawn? Councilman Weezer? To be continued. Tell a lie loud enough and long enough, and people will believe it. You know whose quotation that is? Adolf Hitler.
Thank you very much. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker.
Hi, Sharon Brewer, public comment. Today's Daily News front page, Facing Huge Deficits, Mayor and County Unveil Their Budgets, Cutting Spending and Raising Fees in a Message to the Cutting Spending and Raising Fees in a Message to Residents That It's Time to Pay Up. Message Should Be Addressed to City Leaders, Time to Stop Protecting Sacred Cows. Speaking of sacred cows, especially even fee waivers, in 10 and 1/2 months, July 1st, 2007 to April 18th, 2008, City Council has waived over $4,080,705, including 28 no amounts given. Article continues to say mayor wants to increase LAPD budget in coming fiscal, fiscal year to pay for hiring 780 new cops. Another article in today's Daily News, page A6, End Urge to LAPD Signing Bonus, says LAPD now has a sworn workforce of 9,692 officers. That means LAPD only needs to hire 308, not 780 more officers to reach mayor's goal of 10,000 by 2010. Daily News article, April 21st, front page, Trash Fee Hike Can't Cover Cop Additions. Despite this fact, mayor wants to boost bills higher. Trash fee increase to $36 a month, dollars a month, would be a full-cost recovery of providing garbage collection. Parks was careful to say trash fee increase was not intended to directly pay for more police officers, which would have constituted a tax that required a citywide vote. Rather, he said the increasing tax fee was an attempt to end decades-old subsidizing of residential trash, trash pickups for people in single-family homes and small apartment complexes. City can raise fees to cover costs of providing a service without an election. The trash fee money then would go into the general fund, freeing up the money to hire the additional police officers. Average cost putting officer on street is 22, $224,000. For, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Our good friend Ralph Fertig is our next speaker from USC. Professor Fertig, like to come forward, and then Jennifer Collins will follow afterwards.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Councilman. The, uh, three, thank you, Bill. 320 graduate students in social work at the University of Southern California have been studying the problems of homelessness in the, uh, Los Angeles area entirely. And thank you very much for supporting SB2 last year, which now mandates our city, along with all the other cities and states in the country, to come up with a plan for the housing of the homeless. Councilman Reyes has generously invited us to a special hearing on Thursday, and we will be there, but some of the students wanted an opportunity to speak to the broader City Council about the need for mixed-income housing as a solution for not only eliminating homelessness, but for integrating people into the mainstream of Los Angeles society. And I defer to Jennifer, the first of these students.
Thank you, and I think our next speaker, Jennifer Collins.
Good morning. I'm from the USC School of Social Work. While visiting businesses at Hollywood Boulevard and Western Avenue, I spoke with John, a Starbucks supervisor, who stated that his store is one of the five or six Los Angeles Starbucks receiving the most traffic from the homeless. John explained that before the Hollywood Western Metro Station was built, its then vacant lot was a meeting place for the homeless, who continue to gather nearby. He enthusiastically voiced support for inclusionary housing. When thanked for his willingness to share his opinion, John further explained that he was once a DCFS kid and had graduated from a nearby agency serving homeless youth. By remaining in Hollywood, John proves an important point. Homeless individuals may still consider Hollywood home. His story is one of inspiration. Using his own resilience and some supportive services, he was able to overcome challenges and to secure housing and employment within his community. Without stable housing, many youth and families cannot begin to overcome their challenges and must live in poverty on the streets. It is our hope that more people like John will be given housing opportunities and become active, socially-conscious participants in the communities they call home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a few more speakers. Mr. Rosendahl on this issue can, we'll go ahead, okay. Jessica Barganza, followed by Jessica Wells, and then Jennifer Danielean.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Barganza, and I would like to speak on the behalf of low-income residents in regards to mixed-income housing. In Los Angeles, the majority of residents are renters, and rents have soared beyond the reach of nearly all working people in the city. As a result, permanent affordable housing is in greater demand today than it ever has been. A significant number of low-income residents pay up to half of their annual income on housing alone. Many of these residents, including families with children, divert resources needed for basic necessities into housing costs and are often just one emergency away from becoming homeless. For your review, I have included a more detailed report on my research findings in support of mixed-income housing. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Jessica?
I'm also here to speak on inclusionary zoning. Since the 1970s, American communities have been implementing inclusionary zoning as a method to create, um, housing opportunity for low-income residents. Los Angeles is now being asked to incorporate inclusionary zoning into its community. Now, the current draft of the City of Los Angeles Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance is comparable to those that have been presented by such states as New Jersey, Massachusetts, and Colorado, as well as the Californian cities of San Francisco, San Diego, and San Francisco. Communities that have already implemented inclusionary zoning ordinance have reaped several benefits. These benefits include the diversification of workforce and provision of greater economic advantage to low-income residents. This is accomplished by incorporating low-income units closer to city centers where jobs are more readily available. This reduces residential segregation and has been found to increase minority employment rate, medical benefits, amount of disposable income, and overall feeling of safety. The common theme amongst most cities which have implemented inclusionary zoning ordinance is the support of local politicians. It's only through the support of politicians that an inclusionary zoning ordinance will survive. For in the face of this adversity for the low-income residents, they deserve the support of their community leaders that be provided with such basic rights as a roof over their head. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last public speaker is Jennifer Danielean.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Danielean, and I will be presenting studies on mixed-income housing. There are many studies that have been done on mixed-income housing. Lake Park Place in Chicago was an effort to create mixed-income housing and low-income housing projects. There were 282 apartments in the complex, and half were marketed to families of one adult working and earning 50 to 80% of the median income. And the other half of the apartments were put aside for families making less than 50% of the median income. The designers hoped that the proximity would create new behavior and norms between the low-income project residents and the non-project residents. The building was different from ordinary public housing because of the Chicago Housing Authority added anonymity such as full-time security, janitorial staff, daycare, after-school programs, and laundry room in each building. Through self-report of residents at Lake Park Place, they found that non-project and project residents had interactions often with one another, and the project residents provided employment opportunities for the project residents. The study also found that both groups of residents volunteered to help make Lake Park Place safer. In addition, non-project residents and project residents felt safer in Lake Park Place. The project residents felt safer than the non-project residents. Another program is the GATRO program in Chicago, and is the result of the lawsuit against the Department of Housing and Urban Development for having racially discriminatory policies against the public housing program. The program will assist low-income individuals that have been waiting on the waitlist since 1981 move to better labor markets, schools, and neighborhoods. The study compared families moving to middle, um, income suburbs to families moving to low-income black sitting neighborhoods. They found that children from families that moved to those suburbs are more likely to be in school, in college classes, in four-year colleges, in higher-paid jobs with benefits. This study indicates that neighborhood influences the child's potential to excel academically as well as in work-related factors. These studies provide important findings of the benefits of mixed-income housing. Therefore, we need mixed-income housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to acknowledge, uh, three individuals who have, I think, want to comment, um, on the public speaker. Rose, excuse me, Councilmember Rosendahl, Reyes, and Garcetti.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I walked into the Council Chambers this morning with my veterans' hat on. The good news, on this Earth Day, we turned earth at the Veterans' property to build 21 units for families of veterans, so that they can visit their loved ones on that facility site. We dug the dirt, and in six months, it'll be done. My American Legion Post 283 donated $2,150,000 towards this project. I want to thank the professor and his USC students for engaging on the homeless issue and on affordable housing issues. Earth Day is great to me because we turn the earth in giving 21 folks an opportunity to be with their loved ones. As we know now, uh, with the RAND study, that 1.7 million Americans have gone through the Iraqi and Afghan wars, of which 620,000 are coming back with either a form of, uh, post-traumatic stress syndrome, 300,000, another 320,000 have brain injuries. It's a serious issue. I applaud USC for their leadership on it, and I applaud Post 283 for contributing toward this worthwhile project. That, thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise to thank Professor Fertig and the students. A few months ago, I had the opportunity to speak with their class. It was great to see so many youngsters, folks, students who are focused on this issue. Uh, they raise the obvious questions. They want answers. They're doing their studies, and it's up to us to provide solutions, strategies. So I thank them for the perspective, uh, they're able to see these kinds of challenges with a set of fresh, new eyes, and hopefully, with their energy, we can continue to look at different strategies and simulate that political will to come up with the type of answers that I know will be, taking a lot of courage from any of us, in engaging this very insignificant issue. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and thank you for the speakers for being here today. Mr. Clerk, first item.
Item six was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. Uh, this is the second reading, colleagues, um, of one of the, uh, ordinances we had last week. Um, and I know tomorrow we'll be looking at revenue generating suggestions that many people, Ms. Gruehl, uh, Mr. Rosendahl, obviously our chairman, Mr. Parks, um, Mr. Weisler and others have suggested for, uh, generating more revenue in a very difficult budget year. But, uh, this piece, you know, we're all aware of the financial difficulties that we are facing. We saw the mayor's budget come out yesterday, um, and that we're faced with a never-seen-before $406 million deficit. With the economy in trouble and some of our revenues down, we have a tough challenge ahead, and we know it's going to be a challenging year. So in January, I introduced this motion asking the Office of Finance to explore several revenue-collecting measures that would help us shore up next year's budget, so we wouldn't have to cut important services, and we would go after folks who weren't paying their taxes. Essentially, those of us who all do, um, are subsidizing the services for those who have not. This ordinance is the first of these. It requires city parking lot operators to comply with our parking occupancy and business tax laws before they can receive their permit to operate. Most parking lot operators do abide by the law, but I think many of us read in press accounts, stories of parking lot operators who are not paying either the parking tax or, in many cases, the business tax. And again, at a year, we're going to cut back poverty programs, we're going to cut back our wrecked parks and library hours potentially. It seems unfair that these folks are getting away with not paying their taxes. So with a stronger enforcement of the tax laws already on the book, books, we're estimated by the, uh, Office of, sorry, the Department of Finance, the Office of Finance, we can raise millions of dollars for the city. So I want to thank Antoinette Cristoval and her staff, who are doing creative thinking, a wonderful job, um, continuing their work to help us work their way, our way out of this budget crisis. And by getting these measures in place today with an eye vote, colleagues, we can start collecting these revenues as soon as possible. So I thank you and I ask you for your support on this ordinance today, and I look forward. Ms. Hahn, thank you for pushing the ball forward on our, our single-topic Revenue Day tomorrow. It will be a great, um, uh, time for everybody, and I urge your support today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, and we did hear that in, in budget as well, and a, a great idea for us to, uh, be able to ensure we're getting the funds we need. With that, Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Items 15 and 19 were called special by Councilmembers Garcetti and Perry.
Thank you. Ms. Perry? We do, I know a public hearing was not held on item 19, but item 15, um, did have a public hearing, so we have a few cards.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Madam Chair, that committee, would you like to hear, make your opening statement, and then hear from them?
Yeah, just a few quick comments. I think we're taking a great step today, becoming a greener, more sustainable city. We are already setting a high standard by creating municipal buildings with strict green standards, and now we're asking the private sector to follow suit and to make a more significant impact on the quality of our environment here in our city. Los Angeles is projected to grow exponentially in the coming years, and it's absolutely critical that we find ways to grow in a smart and sustainable way, to improve the air quality, to conserve water, to reduce power demands, cut pollution. These are all things we hope to achieve in our city. Now, you've heard the statistics on the negative impacts buildings have had on our environment, and they conserve, they consume a third of our total energy and raw materials and produce a third of our greenhouse gases and waste output. And yet, we need to embrace new buildings, we need to build more housing, we need to accommodate our growing population throughout the entire city of Los Angeles. That is why this ordinance is so important. Enhancing green building practices on developments of 50,000 square feet in size will support sustainability. In fact, it incorporates sustainable building guidelines into our municipal building code, ensuring that we all practice green and thoughtful development as we move forward. It's a program that I wholeheartedly support and know it will make a difference to the region. This program has been designed to be cost-effective for developers to create healthy and quality living spaces that address current market demands of incorporating green practices. They will also reduce the negative impact that buildings have on the environment, and with priority processing incentives and the potential for long-term cost savings, I think this is something that we can embrace both publicly and privately, and I'm pleased with the goals, the positive outcomes. I think we're building a strong framework for our city, thanks to everybody who worked on this, and their tenacity, their perseverance have brought us to this day and to make it a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Perry. And before we go, uh, Mr. Reyes, okay, if we go for the public comment, or would you like to speak for, okay?
Let's go with the public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Uh, we have, um, Richard Lutt, I think it is, uh, Zuma Dog, Ken Lewis, and Greg Wrights. This is on item 19. We are taking 15 and 19 together. We also have cards on 15. Should we, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing on that item as well. Please, Richard.
Councilmembers, my name is Richard Lutt. Uh, I am with Interior Removal Specialists for a demolition contractor that works in the city of Los Angeles. Last year, we did approximately 11 million square feet of demolition in the city. That was a total of 1,120 separate projects in the city of Los Angeles. Of those projects, only eight fell in the threshold of 50,000 square feet or above. From 11 million square feet, only eight of those projects hit that threshold. I have sent emails, I've communicated at the public comment periods. Uh, I firmly believe that the threshold for green building needs to be 25,000 square feet or above. If we go to that threshold, 88 of the projects that we hit fall into that threshold, which is still not a huge amount when you figure the sheer number of jobs, but it stands a better chance of actually impacting the amount of construction and demolition debris that is sent to the landfills by the city of Los Angeles. The average floor plate in a high-rise building in Los Angeles is in the 20,000-square-foot range. By making the threshold 50,000 square feet, that means that a tenant can rent two floors in almost any high-rise in the city and fall well below that threshold of 50,000 square feet. On Earth Day, if we expect to make, if we hope to make a significant change, I firmly suggest that we make that threshold 25,000 square feet or more. That means anybody that rents more than one full floor in a high-rise in Los Angeles will be required to go to the LEED Silver Certification. If they can afford to rent more than two floors, then they can afford the LEED Certification, and I think it will make an honest and measurable change in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Zuma Dog, followed by Ken Lewis.
One minute, please, one minute, please. I forgot, one minute, please, and I'd like to thank the person who just gave me some of this information, Vice of the Pueblos. Then I would also like to make sure that these green standards are implemented in projects like the Dubai's Grand Avenue Project downtown. Let's make sure that this is implemented for there. I know that there's a NoHo project. It'd be great to get them off the electric grid and get them into recycled reclaimed water, so I would say that we should be implementing this in NoHo. That would be fantastic in Councilmember Labanda's district, and I'm sure he would support something like that. LA Live, LA Live, they should be implementing these green standards as well. I think that'd be a wonderful starting point. As long as, uh, in the LA River Project, I would implement all of these green standards. Of course, we should do it, and let's get off the electric grid, and let's start using recycled- recycled water, and we can also start, if you'd like green, if you're all for the green use in City Hall, I noticed there's a sign on the faucets in the restroom that says, "Please turn the water faucets off." How about implementing the kind that shut themselves off? LA's supposed to be cutting-edge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ken Lewis, followed by Greg Wrights, followed by Mike Massey.
Councilmembers, my name is Ken Lewis. I'm president of AC Martin Architects. I think it's a momentous day for the city. It's an ordinance that is, we really appreciate, think it's a great time for it, and look forward to what it will mean for the city. The opportunity for the city, city staff, the architects, engineers, contractors that work in this city to learn from others, learn from a national standard, we think is a very positive thing. We look forward to the city actually moving the ordinance up in terms of its requirements over time after, after sort of a learning period. With that, I appreciate your, your support of this ordinance.
Thank you very much. Greg Wrights?
Councilmembers, my name is Greg Wrights. I'm with Rethink Development, and I'm a member of the U.S. Green Building Council. Wanted to comment on the process of developing this ordinance. It was a very comprehensive process. They take, the, the team that worked on it included many people from around the city, throughout the industry, and was exhaustive in addressing their concerns. The result is a program that's very balanced, and I want to, I want to highlight a couple elements of the program that I think are very important. As I said, it's very balanced. I think it has incentives, it has requirements, but it also has an educational component, which I think is critical to addressing some of the concerns that people have raised over this time. Once people become aware of what green building is and how to implement it, I believe that those concerns will be, will be allayed. And then it has, as part of it, an evolution. So it recognizes that the, the plan is not perfect today, but will continue to evolve and change and improve over time, and I think that's a critical element that needs to be focused on and continual improvement process to, to make it work for the city now and into the future. And finally, as a developer, I am building a LEED for a new construction project in the city of Los Angeles to a very high level of LEED Certification, either gold or platinum. And we found that the incremental cost is almost negligible, so that concern, I don't think, should be something that, that should weigh upon your minds today. Every time a building is built, it lasts for 40 years or more on average, and I believe that if you take action today to ensure that we build more green buildings in this city, that we'll be preserving the environment today and providing a higher quality of life for all of us into the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike Massey, followed by Jaime Valdivia, followed by Veronica Perez.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Mike Massey. I'm the executive director of the Piping Industry Progress and Education Trust Fund. I represent the plumbers and pipe fitters unions, and also I represent the contractors that are signatory to union agreements in Southern California. And without any hesitation at all, we ask you to pass the ordinance in front of you requiring green building for the city of Los Angeles. I think that I can put it best by saying, what must it be like to be a member of the Los Angeles City Council, to be able to get up and come to work this morning and vote on an ordinance that's going to improve the world we live in and create good American jobs? How often do you get a chance to do that? Thank you very much. We know you'll do the right thing.
Thank you, Mike. Jaime, followed by Veronica, followed by Holly Schroder.
Good morning. Thank you again for the pleasure, for allowing me to come and speak in front of you guys. I echo what Mr. Massey just said. I'm Jaime Valdivia. I'm the Assistant Executive Director at the Pipe Office there. The last time I spoke to you, I told you guys about my, my son here in Los Angeles, being a plumber, and the dreams I have of going with him and listening to him talk about working on green buildings in LA. I went home that day, and my youngest son, 14-year-old, asked me, he said, "Pop, how was your day today?" I said, "It was fantastic. I got to talk in front of the city council and kind of prop up your brother a little bit." He said, "What'd you say about me?" I said, "I didn't say anything about you." You know, I said, "Basically, we're talking about green buildings. What do you know about green buildings?" He says, "What do I know of green buildings?" He goes, "Pop, I listened to you. I also learned this stuff at school." I said, "Well, listen." I said, "Besides taking a shower once a month to conserve water, what else do you do to, you know, for green building?" He says, "Well, Pop, let me tell you what I do. He says, "When I brush my teeth, I make sure I turn off the water. I don't leave it running." He goes, "Instead of using the faucet to wet my hair," he goes, "I have a spray bottle so I can spray my hair and then comb it." He goes, "After I leave every room, I make sure I turn off the lights there." He goes, "Also," he goes, "I take a shower with a five-gallon bucket. He goes, "And the water that falls in that bucket, I use it to water your lemon tree." So does a program like this make a difference in the future? Well, I got to tell you, it's had an impact in my house, because I got a son now who's safeguarding his water, being water-efficient, energy-efficient. Once again, on behalf of Pipe, my family, I thank you for your hard work and consideration for this program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Veronica?
Good morning. Veronica Perez Becker from the Central City Association. I'm also here on behalf of the LA Chamber of Commerce. We support green building and commend the city for its leadership on this issue. We thank the council committees and city staff for being responsive to private sector concerns by incorporating flexibility in the rating system through innovation and design credits, and by giving builders additional time to properly implement a workable program. We hope that you will ratify those changes here today. However, we still have concerns about adopting third-party guidelines as a city ordinance. In particular, we are concerned about the provision requiring the applicant to use the LEED guideline in effect at the time of plan check submittal. This could result in uncertainty for builders and legal issues for the city if the LEED standards are independently changed after the entitlements process has commenced. Instead, we ask that you adopt a set version of LEED to be used as a reference guideline. We thank you for your consideration, and we once again thank the council and city staff for making this a collaborative process.
Thank you. Holly Schroder, followed by Jane Paul, followed by Michelle, sorry, Michelle Garkanian.
Members of the council, Holly Schroder with the Building Industry Association represents the home building industry, and I'm going to speak to residential construction. And I think it's important to distinguish between different types of construction as you're considering the ordinance today. First off, when you hear about how much energy buildings use, in California, it's very different. We have very high standards. In many ways, building green is a, is a natural progression that we have been on for a long time. Buildings in, in California use 15%, not the 35% or 40% you're hearing elsewhere. If you remodel, you have to bring things up to code. There are many things already existing that are in place, that we need to be acknowledging that, that are already a standard for California. In other ways, though, this is coming upon us very rapidly in a, in a time when the home building industry is suffering greatly and having an effect on, on all of our economic prosperity. The reference guideline that would be used under this ordinance, LEED for Homes, is brand new. It's less than five months old. So we're adopting something that's, has very limited testing and very limited testing in California. So I want to recognize that when you hear cost numbers, when you hear discrepancies in the information, it has to do a lot with building type. I have three major concerns. One, you just heard Ms. Perez speak to, relating to the prospectiveness of the standard. The city council is delegating authority to a private, non-governmental entity that can change the reference guidelines, so change how points are awarded at any time without having to come to this council. I think that that's a responsibility for you guys to decide what are the values for Los Angeles that ought to be considered. There are also a couple of procedural elements, and you probably have a copy of my letter that have not been followed. These are changes to building codes. There are certain findings that need to be made. I'm not aware that those have been made. I'm not aware that proper notice was provided on the fee, so there are some procedural elements there. Again, we're not against green building. We, we have been building green, and we continue to green. There's new green building codes coming from the state. This is a natural progression, but I ask that you really think about the authority and where it should best lie. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Jane Paul, followed by Michelle, and then Will Wright.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Jane Paul. I represent Green LA, a coalition of 100 environmental and environmental justice organizations. We support green building in Los Angeles, and we support the city's policy as the good beginning of a long-term program to ensure that people of all incomes and businesses of all sizes can have safe homes and workplaces, reduced utility costs, and increased health and productivity, starting today. Los Angeles has an opportunity to lead the large American cities in reduction of greenhouse gases. Once the program is enacted, it will be the nation's largest, resulting in vast reductions of CO2 emissions, more than the ambitious and politically uncontested San Francisco policy. It is critical to begin immediately to change the built environment. Delay means that fewer residents will have fewer chances to live in green buildings, thereby worsening problems in children's and adults' health and exacerbating economic instability. The opportunity for reduced utility bills and improved housing quality should not only go to the voluntary efforts of the wealthy. The environmental community is willing to compromise on the initial stringency of the green building program. However, it is necessary for the city to exhibit the courage to move forward, to take the next step. In order to include all buildings in the movement to be green, the city can provide guidelines on preferred practices. The environmental and economic justice communities believe green building is an imperative to immediately combat climate change, to develop a competitive green manufacturing and workforce sector in LA, to ensure that buildings in every community of Los Angeles are healthy, to guarantee that every family has an opportunity to save on energy costs, and has an opportunity to improve the well-being of their families and their neighborhoods. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Michelle, followed by Will Wright.
The Los Angeles Business Council fully supports the private sector green building policy in its form, because we believe that green business is good business and sustainable development is good business. We also believe that this program is an excellent first step in reaching the environmental goals of making Los Angeles the cleanest, greenest big city in the nation. We would also like to take this time to applaud the city family, including the mayor's office, council office, all pertinent city departments, including planning, Department of Building and Safety, Department of Water and Power, Public Works, and Housing Department, for their speedy and expeditious process of pushing this through. Thank you very much. Have a good day. Happy Earth Day.
Thank you, Michelle. Will Wright.
Good morning. My name is Will Wright. I work with the American Institute of Architects, and I'm here to personify our full support for this ordinance. And I also just wanted to single out some commendations for Walker Wells, Claire Bowen, Sam Siegel especially, and Krista Klein. I really think we should applaud them for their work with this effort. It's a year-long effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. That closes public comment on this item. Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Weisar, Mr. Labonch.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to rise and thank my colleagues, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Garcetti, as well as the mayor for putting together this very important effort. The U.S. Green Building Council creates these standards, and with this ordinance, we'll be able to meet certain thresholds that allows for these green buildings to exist. We also know that we have to take it a step further. We have to look at how the city can create cottage industries that stimulates green building materials, green building jobs, and actually take advantage of the population base we have here, the demand that we have for this kind of product, and start influencing new neighborhoods to develop in a way in which we look at this comprehensively. The U.S. Green Building Council has certified a project in Taylor Yard under McCormick Baron, and they are looking at these pilot programs where a whole neighborhood, neighborhood development of itself, can achieve U.S. Green Council standards. So as we take this step by step, building by building, we can now look at whole neighborhoods under this concept. We're also looking at the Royal Seco cornfield specific plan to be a LEED neighborhood development project as a pilot project. So we started talking about bicycles, we started talking about pedestrian-friendly, we started talking about mixed-use, mixed-income, and we started looking at the total picture of how these impacts can actually create a change, not only in our behavior, but in how we impact our environment. And hopefully, we can see the goodness and the marketability in making this possible in an international city. So we should celebrate our diversity, look at our cultures, and start redefining our neighborhoods that have this potential of meeting these new green standards. So it's great to see my colleagues, the mayor, and the staff that should be applauded for the hard work. They are the unsung heroes to actually meet these goals, building by building. But now, colleagues, let's talk about neighborhoods, let's talk about whole sections of the city, and set a standard that allows us to think about the welfare of our grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I might press my button twice, so excuse my indulgence, because there's a lot of people to thank and a lot of colleagues to single out, and a lot of people to congratulate here today after more than a year of work. But let me first address what Mike Massey said, which is absolutely, I woke up today so excited to come to work. And I do most days, but I knew that this was going to be here today, and that this is one of the most significant things that we will do this year as a council. When we had an entire day on, two days on the environment, colleagues, one of the things that we really hammered home was the importance of going green. We've shown that, working closely with Global Green in our municipal buildings, and we've had a great record, more than 40 buildings that have gone green, pushing that up to silver, but we've had gold, we've had platinum, we've had super folks at the Bureau of Engineering who have been among the leading experts in government on going green. And now taking this to the private sector, because we've done it first, shows that we aren't just imposing something on the private sector that we don't think is, is doable, because we've shown the savings, we've seen the results in energy and water consumption use going down. And on Earth Day, if, if we can do something in which our energy and water use goes down, which our use of landfills is reduced, and which our carbon footprint also is lessened, this is a great day for Los Angeles. I want to thank my two colleagues who, who chaired the two committees that really deal with this most. Jan Perry, who has been an environmental champion and has built green long before this ordinance was there, and is building a great city hall, which does that right now in South Los Angeles. And Councilmember Reyes, who everything from green roofs to the revitalization of the LA River and smarter planning and land use that actually emphasizes our, lessening our carbon footprint have really been the twin pillars of that on this council. Councilmember Smith, who's been a great environmentalist, but the staff's also, Councilmember Rosendahl, who worked on this, Councilmember Weiss, who worked on this, Councilmember Hahn, who worked on this. And thank you for singling out Sam Siegel from my staff, who I want to thank, who's really poured a lot of time and work, and Krista Klein, Nancy Sutley, from the mayor's office, who have done an extraordinary job. You know, I know that in LA Times, they wanted to kind of turn LA versus San Francisco. It's a great day for California, whether, whether or not San Francisco is a boutique city or not, and we can get into the friendly rivalry between the two. We, San Francisco has charted what it'll do in the next couple of years a little bit more detailed than we will, but I have faith, because the green team, which we have established, which we all have wish lists of what the green team will do next, I know will reduce that square footage as we look at the coming years. We will be able to, the conservative estimate was 7.5 million square feet affected by this program. Chewing through those numbers ourselves, we think, and talking to building safety and others, the numbers are closer to about 14 million. So San Francisco's will affect about 3 million square feet. We'll look at about 14 million square feet minimum, and if we ramp this up in future years, we'll be able to do that even more aggressively. I want to thank the developers who have also shown the way. There's a great op-ed today in the Daily News by Kevin Ratner from Forest City that shows how this is making green sense, not only in the environmental sense, but in the bottom line for builders. And I've handed that out along with a, an op-ed I wrote in the Daily Breeze, Ms. Hahn's paper of choice, about this as well. I'm going to get a little bit more into detail when I press my button again, but I just wanted to start with the thanks, because the, the Los Angeles Business Council, the Building Industry Association, we showed that we can collaborate and do this the right way, but still do it in an aggressive way, and a way that will make a huge impact in the city, and so I'll save my concluding remarks for a second.
Mr. Weisar, followed by Mr. Labonch.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and certainly, building green demonstrates the city's commitment to sustainability, and I applaud all the departments and everyone who put this together. It's a long time coming. We are certainly, should be doing, we're doing something that we should have done a while back. I also applaud other cities in California who have done similar items, but one of the things that's unique about Los Angeles as well is that we have a very important historic core here in downtown Los Angeles. And not too long ago, an ordinance that has helped this downtown core, this historic core, to kind of start showing some signs of, of light again was the Adaptive Reuse Ordinance, which allows some of these buildings to be used again and not be these old crumbling buildings that many had become. And a couple of months ago, I actually announced a new initiative called Bringing Back Broadway, where we hope to bring Broadway back to its glory days, polish up those beautiful old buildings that we have, and allow many of the upper floors to be used. Right now, most of them Right now, most of them are vacant, and our plan is to make Broadway the once vibrant place that it was in evening, and also to invite people from throughout the region to come visit this beautiful place with 12 historic theaters, the most than any other place has in the United States. So I fully support this green building ordinance, but at the same time, I'm a bit concerned about what will it do to those areas who are now revitalizing themselves in this area. So I'm submitting a motion today just to give that a bit more discussion and come back to Plumb so that we look at the possibility of exempting historic structures and/or those structures that are using the adaptive reuse policy. Many people consider the adaptive reuse policy right now a bit cumbersome, and also that it actually deter, may deter people from bringing these buildings back to light. So I'm submitting a motion so that we further discuss the possibility of exempting historic structures and any structure that uses the adaptive reuse policy so that we have a better understanding what type of impact this will have on those structures. We want to continue to see the revitalization of some of the areas in downtown Los Angeles that we've only seen recently, and we don't want to hinder that progress. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you. Is there any city staff here on this issue? Exhibit A, as you introduce yourself, please show the council the great bag that you got from the Department of Public Works right here, and this is available. This is a green recycled bag made out of plastic material, which is a great way to start the day. I want to congratulate you because it's the staff, and I know Mr. Reyes, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Weisar spoke, but let's see how the staff feel because you're planners and you have to figure this out. Give us your feelings.
Claire Bowen, city planning. I am extremely excited about this ordinance. We've worked very long and hard on it. We've actually worked on it with a collaboration of the constituents of the city of Los Angeles, which include developers and architects, environmentalists, land use consultants, engineers. We also worked on it with the different departments here in the city to make it really a working program. We worked with the mayor's office, the council offices, Department of Public Works, Water and Power, Building and Safety, Environmental Affairs Department, Housing.
You mentioned Water and Power. I see Tom Gackstetter. Tom, you should not be reading that PowerPoint or whatever you got there, Raspberry, Blueberry. Get up here. You are an important role in this.
Well, there's a whole, the first couple of rows are full of planning.
Well, introduce them all so they get a little recognition on that. Okay?
Okay. We've got, on the first row there, we've got Jack Bornoff and Sharam, and I forget everybody's names, Zara Actar and Deborah Weintraub. And in the next row, we've got Krista Klein and Paul Bergstrom and Nick Sapinara from CRA. And right behind them, we have Osama Yunan from the Building and Safety Department, and we've got Craig Tranby from Environmental Affairs Department.
You've got a team of people, which is so important. So I wanted to do that, saying that, because I think it's important, and it is a struggle. I love what the young man said back there about his son when he spoke about how he learned these things, how he brushes his teeth and turn it off, and all those little issues. We get to the young people, it does change the course. It's hard to believe that Earth Day was 38 years ago today when they first started it out, and how the world has changed, and how we're rapidly integrating and incorporating these ideas into our process. Tom, give a rundown on the water issue there because I know since 1970, we have made some success, but we've got to make more.
Absolutely.
Hold my time, please.
The water conservation.
Introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. My name is Tom Gackstetter. I'm the manager of conservation at DWP. And the water story in Los Angeles is a great story to tell. We have been able to sustain the growth in population and commerce over the last 25 years and not increase our demand in water. The way we've done that is through aggressive sustained implementation of conservation programs. It's through the adoption and implementation of a very strong conservation water rate, which sends a very clear price signal to our customers that water is precious in Los Angeles and to use it wisely. Going forward, our challenge, actually our many challenges, we have supply situations that are not always within our control, and as such, we need to continue to use water wisely. And this green building program that we're considering today is another step in that process whereby we build water conservation into the projects that come into Los Angeles.
How much water do we have in millions of gallons in basin right now, ready to, what do we use in a daily average on a normal, non-peak summer day?
I apologize. I do not have that number for you today.
Okay, but it's hundreds of millions of gallons a day.
It's quite.
So to conserve it, and I know the MWD, which is our partner, which is the Los Angeles Department of Water Power, helped form in 1929 under the tutelage of William Mulholland, has a program to try to reduce our water use. And I thought about what if we have no watering on Wednesday, like we don't water our yards or our gardens or something. What do you think about that, Tom?
That is a very proactive step, and it's something that everybody can participate in, and frankly, all that your neighbors can see that you participate in as well. It's something that's easily.
Like Wednesday is a W, water is a W, two and two is four. Conserve energy.
Absolutely.
Conserve water.
It's much more of a challenge to say cut back 10% or 15%.
Right.
If you just say don't water on a particular day, then everybody knows and everybody shuts it off. So that is an opportunity.
Good. I'm going to ask the VAC to draft a motion on that, hope to have all your support on that, members, to try to encourage the public on the water issue. But on the planning issue, this is very good, so I want to thank you just as a member of the 15 here and watching the hard work of many others, the teamwork, which is so important. We have great challenges. The world has dynamically changed and will change even more, but this effort to step forwards. I only ask though, and if Building and Safety, David Law, is still here, make sure there's somebody when they get to the public counter that could help people get over hurdles. You know, this is a new way, but somebody, and I know at some retail stores have people in red vests, says, "I'm here to help," and make you get your project done. That's the frustration that people have when there's new rules. I heard a voice from somebody over here was anti a little of it, but I think if there's someone to help them, we can find a way and do it right. So I wanted to congratulate my colleagues. Ms. Perry, as always, in your leadership there, and bringing it off, and Mr. Garcetti as well, and Mr. Reyes, thank you so much. And we will bring back Broadway, but we'll bring it back right, and we'll turn those neon lights on, those historic signs on with maybe solar panels from the DWP hidden from the obstruction of the beautiful historic architecture of the classic buildings on Broadway. Thank you, Mr. President. And this is a good Earth Day event because it is going to make a difference in the life in the basin. It starts one house at a time. And the only thing, I've got 11 seconds left, is this going to help us in mansionization so we don't build these big superstructures in small lots?
It doesn't address that issue directly. We tell with the green building, actually with mansion, in the mansionization ordinance, there's a piece where if you do want that extra piece of your FAR, you actually have to build it to the LEED home standard.
Yeah, because these big giant homes are just big, it's not appropriate to balance with the land. I wanted to balance with the land. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Labange. And the LEED standard, the first thing you look at in points is the size of the living space, so smaller, score's higher always. Ms. Grul.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I too wanted to stand and congratulate Ms. Perry in this council, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Reyes, who I know in all the projects that come through his Plumb, talks about the importance of this. And when you look at the history of our city and how we started with low-flow toilets and how we started, you know, in each instance, and now our refrigerators and our lights, and this is a natural progression as to the issue of climate change and the issue of how we're doing things here locally, and that government entities can sometimes lead the way, either by voluntarily or mandatorily sometimes enforcing different rules and regulations. And so I think when you see here all of the items in the five categories, the site, the water efficiency, the energy and atmosphere, materials and resources, and the indoor environmental quality, we're looking at every aspect of a business and residential use in the city of Los Angeles. And I think it is going to be important as this process goes forward and it evolves and it's new and different that, and I see there's a committee that's been established to ensure that it's, we're not in a position where we say, "Great, we did these, everything's perfect," but to look at what works and what doesn't work as we go forward. And I think many of the speakers that are here will be part of that discussion, which I think has been critical in the effectiveness of the plan that's come forward, is that year's worth of participation by everyone, some people who agreed, some people who disagreed, and I think it's a better product based on that. One of the things I am interested is in ensuring as we, as people go through, Building and Safety and Planning Department, training be provided to those entities and engineering and, because we have some that are experts, but the importance of that, because if someone walks in and says, "I'm building this new building, it's 50,000 feet or greater," and they talk to one person, that, anyone who they come up to in the counter or others is going to really need to understand that. Could you just briefly explain how you think it's going to be implemented within the city on that particular aspect?
Absolutely. The green team really is, places emphasis on education and educating the staff. There's been a training program that's been going on the last several weeks. It's been spearheaded by the United Institute Green Building Council, and I think 40 or 60 of staff from Water and Power and Building and Safety have been participating in that. It walks them through all the different components of the different LEED rating systems. The planning department has also established a green bag series that's going to be going ongoing over the next year. We've already started to, again, make sure that all of our staff in the different respective positions, whether at their counter, whether they're case managers or zoning administrators, are familiar with the process, to make sure that people really are familiar when projects come forth. So it's something we're really committed to.
That would be great. And again, this is an exciting day in Los Angeles, exciting day for California, and look to see other cities who will model what we're trying to do here, as well as, again, will learn along the way. And I think the importance of involving also our neighbor councils as they go through in their daily lives and interact with people, also to all of our staffs. And I hope you'll let us know so that they can be aware as someone comes through our doors asking for support for a project, remind them of all of the requirements that are part of that. This is really a great day for Los Angeles and our ability to say we're not only talking the talk, but walking the walk and being able to demonstrate how important it is for us to plan for our future. And as was mentioned, you know, our children are the ones who really are going to help, not only going to do it for them in their future, but they're learning about this at a very young age and are going to be the stewards in the future for our environment and addressing the issues that are before us today. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grul. Our next speaker is Ms. Hahn. After that is Mr. Alarcon.
Thank you very much. And this is a great first step forward for the city of Los Angeles. And yeah, you know, I look forward to coming to work almost every day, but this was exciting for us to be taking this step as a city of Los Angeles. I remember the first Earth Day, 1970. I was high school, about to graduate. We were young, we were impetuous, we thought we were going to save the world, we certainly thought we were going to save the earth. But frankly, I'll say 38 years later, I think Planet Earth is not doing well. And frankly, I think the state of Planet Earth is not good. And many of us were in Washington, D.C. last week where we heard Senator Dianne Feinstein talk about the state of Planet Earth as being in crisis. So we actually haven't done as good as we should have in 38 years, and it's kind of sad that we've waited this long to even come forward with an ordinance like this, but it's a good first step. But I have two issues and wondering how we can make this even better. I know we have a green team, which is great, that is going to look at this and look at maybe how we can modify it and come back and make it even stronger. In terms of water conservation, I feel very strongly, in fact, I introduced a motion in January asking us to see how all new development might incorporate the idea of purple pipes. And I think if we're really going to talk about conserving water, we need all new development to include the idea of purple pipes as their building. I know we're not totally connected yet, but it would be a shame if we got connected on the other end, and yet these new buildings weren't connected with the purple pipes. You'd have to go in and redo it. Seems to me if our green building ordinance was really strong, we would have included that. So I'd love to hear back. Maybe it's the next phase where we look at, and the green team can tell me if that's feasible or not, because I really think that should be a part of this whole LEED standards. I don't know how we talk about conservation when we don't talk about purple pipes. Maybe you can answer that. Hold my time. Maybe that's the next step.
One of the concepts in developing the green building ordinance was certainly the recognition, there were lots of codes that are in place that could be perhaps modified to further encourage green activities, or also codes that are in place today that perhaps actually discourage that need to be modified. And so one of the objectives of the green team would be start to look at a variety of codes, and that certainly can be one of them.
Okay, I would love for you to come back with that. The other thing, I was reading in the L.A. Times today about San Francisco's ordinance, and their ordinance actually takes in projects that are half the size of the ones that we're proposing. I'd love to have the green team come back and tell us how many more projects would be impacted if we went down to the square footage that San Francisco has adopted and what that would mean for the city of Los Angeles.
I think, actually, Walker Wells with Global Green, I think some of that analysis was done yesterday, and it turned out that it would roughly double the number of projects from being between 100, 200 a year at the 50,000 square foot level to being into the 200 to 400 a year, which our sense at this point in time may be too many for the system to absorb, but I think the other point I want to make is that when we talk about this program as it's evolved, it's gone from starting with the standards to starting with the green team. And we've understood that this is about administration and effective administration of whatever the standards are. And so having this green team in place to look at water conservation in plumbing fixtures or purple pipe or solar panels or whatever individual issues people see as priorities is critical, but also the green team is in place to then look at the program and say, "Are we ready to lower the square footage threshold? Are we ready to raise the level of LEED that people need to achieve?" But again, based on a bit of a track record of achievement after seeing how the program works after, you know, I don't know exactly when the first check-in would be, but I think there's a mandatory check-in after two years to come back and report and give you an update.
Thank you. And again, I want to congratulate President Garcetti and Ed Reyes and Jan Perry and this green team. But one of my priorities would be the inclusion of purple pipes as part of our standards. So I'd love to have a report back from the green team on whether or not that's feasible or not. Thank you.
Mr. Rosaldal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Morning.
Hi. Morning.
First of all, this is a good beginning. It is a beginning. Today is Earth Day, and I'm so proud of our city moving forward, but it's the beginning. And I have some questions. First, let me just ask Building and Safety, okay? Who's Building and Safety? Come on up, Building and Safety. Hold my time, obviously, until he sits down. Good morning.
Good morning.
And this is a question for you. You know, Lawa, the airport, is a proprietary department, so it isn't bound by the current city policy to build green. While I appreciate Lawa's early efforts to become more sustainable, we can do more. Will this ordinance apply to airport modernization projects such as airport terminals, the consolidated rental center, and both of which will be over 50,000 square feet?
Yes. Good morning. Osama Yunan with Building and Safety. This ordinance would apply to all new buildings, private and city-owned buildings that would be included.
So the answer is yes, that all of Lawa's modernization projects would have to be sensitive to this ordinance in terms of going green, going LEED?
If they fall within the criteria, yes.
Okay. Would you please take a hard look at their projects there? When I first got elected to the council, I held up $850 million on the Tom Bradley terminal until they had a greening element in it. They then did hire a environmental architectural firm to assist, and they brought back to a senior position, a fellow by the name of Johnson, who's big on environment. So they're sensitive now, but I caught that at that very moment. So please look at all of their modernization projects and see how that fits within the new rules we're putting together. Okay? Next question. LEED is a national system, but here in the Southwest, we have special geographic needs, especially relating to water consumption and transportation. How will this program affect our city's acute water shortages and transportation gridlock? How can we further tailor the LEED system to reflect our local needs? Somebody want to address that, please?
Walker Wells with Global Green. On the water issue, which is probably the easier one of the two to address at a building-by-building basis, the way the program is structured now, using LEED, people have the option of gaining credits by doing water efficiency, so it's not a prerequisite. Most people get those credits because they're easy ones to accomplish through fixtures, toilets, faucets. However, what the city could do, or the green team could recommend... However, what the city could do or the Green Team could recommend is that the water, one or two of the water credits in LEED become local prerequisites. So that you say any project in Los Angeles needs to get those two water credits in LEED, and then you'd be seeing at least 20% water conservation. Transportation is a little more tricky. Buildings, LEED projects do get points for being close to transit, close to services. But it's a little hard to say whether building more buildings close to transit will thus support transit, will thus reduce congestion, but that's the hope that we all have.
Okay. What I would like to see happen, because this is the beginning, we're going to tweak it, we're going to build on it, to look at those two unique elements of Southern California. One is the water issue, and everything needs to be focusing on that, as well as the transportation gridlock issue. Let's face it, our air is a disaster, in a good part due to the constant parking lot that everybody is in throughout the Southland. So I'd love to get some energy on that. This program represents a compromise. We understand that. We know there's clearly need to improve. What opportunities will there be in the future to revise the program? Can we lower the threshold to capture more projects? Can the program evolve with new green technologies? Just give me a good yes.
Yes. The program is established so that every two years, the Green Team has to come back with a recommendation for changes to the threshold or changes to the standard.
Can we ask you to come back in six months with an update and then give us a yearly report?
Sure.
We don't have time to wait two years anymore.
Right. I understand. There's also an annual report card that's built in, so it allows you at the council to understand what the kind of different impacts are that this green building program is having on the city in terms of water and energy.
Great, great, great. Thank you. My last question, Mr. President, is we are in a lean budget year. I appreciate the work to make this a relatively inexpensive program. As we expand this program, it will require more staff. Here's the big question. Can we include the cost of green planners and green inspectors in the department's fee studies so that in the future, we can use developer fees as an ongoing funding source to pay for these positions?
We can't look at it through the current fee study we're about to do, because that's only for planning projects, but we could certainly, you could again direct the Green Team to come back with a recommendation about it, what kind of costs would be involved to it in putting those positions in place.
Good. Because ideally, I want the developers to pay for those people that will do it, similar to what we have them pay for SEQUAs and all these other reports. They should pay for those green analysis rather than us having to do it.
Well, the intention is that if there is a cost recovery fee that we'll be coming back to council with shortly, that will certainly for projects that are having to come forth and get their clearance from planning, that is cost recoverable.
Great. I want to thank you all very much for that. And Mr. Chair, for your leadership, Mr. President, in moving this forward, and obviously to all my colleagues for being part of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Alarcon is our next speaker.
Well, this is really a great time for Los Angeles. And having served on the council in 1993, sometimes I feel like I'm in a position to be sort of a historian for the council. In about 1996 or '97, we initiated the process for building a library in Lakeview Terrace. And we required that that library be built with the most sustainable available technology. And that project was constructed, and at the time, it was really interesting because the architect, Bill Holland, the city's architect, was opposed to sustainability as to incorporate that into city policy. But by the end of the consideration of the Lakeview Terrace Library, he became a huge advocate for sustainability, in fact, even developed an outside consulting practice when he retired on sustainability, became an expert in the field. And so we've come a long way since then. I'm very pleased to say that the Lakeview Terrace Library is a LEED Platinum project and the only one, I believe, in the City of Los Angeles, at least, public building. And so we accomplished our mission, but this goes leaps and bounds beyond that. But it demonstrates that the city can build buildings that are sustainable, that meet the highest standards from an environmental perspective, and we can do it in a way that is cost efficient. The only thing I would add to this discussion, and some of my colleagues have touched on it already, I only hope that we have the courage to move forward more aggressively as this project moves forward. I hope that we will consider alternative standards besides LEED that may be better for the City of Los Angeles. I hope that we keep our minds open to creating incentives for developers to use these standards and for creating incentives that are scaled up as they increase their certification. So if they go from silver to platinum, we give them increased incentives. I hope we do not look at this as a be all and end all, and that's not the discussion I'm hearing today. I hope that we continue to move forward. I commend all my colleagues who've been working on this. I think it's in all of our hearts, but to actually put it on paper is the hard part. I hope that we have the courage to continue to increase the standards and create the market for this to become the norm for society as a whole. And certainly, the City of Los Angeles can have that kind of impact by developing these standards. There are those who say we're, they're always going to say we're not moving forward aggressively enough. And there are those who will say we're moving too fast, we don't know the ramifications. I think this strikes the balance and is a very reasonable approach. And I only hope that we can ratchet it up each and every day that we're working on it. So I would commend to the Green Team that they should be very aggressive in coming back to the council with higher standards for ourselves. I think my colleagues and I want to improve environmentalism as a whole, but specifically where we impact building projects, we want to impact that. So I only hope that the Green Team will come back with even higher standards. But I commend my colleagues for putting this together. It's a long time since Lakeview Terrace Library, but we're on the right course now, and hopefully this will expedite us moving forward in an environmental manner from this point forward. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. And to conclude, colleagues, what a great way to celebrate Earth Day. And thank you to everybody who's made this possible. As I mentioned in the piece I wrote this morning, it was 44 pobladores who came here and founded a pueblo that was set off by 45 degrees in order to take advantage of sunlight and breezes, built with sustainable materials like adobe. This is our chance now to go green and to build green, to do something for the current generation and for seven generations, as Native Americans often speak about how we should plan ahead, seven generations ahead on the impact of this earth. God bless you, Mr. President. We have a list, I think all of us, and absolutely, Mr. Alarcon, I think what you've heard here and what I heard from you and what everybody wants is how can we continue to push the envelope and be as aggressive as possible? And I think coming back every six months allows us to do that, but also looking at each year, a report card and whatever changes in a way that can also bring the industry along. When you mention there might be other better measures than LEED, I always am impressed the US Green Building Council says, you know, LEED is better than LEED because it evolves just as, we're not freeze framing LEED as one thing, it is constantly evolving to be better, to be useful, to be usable. There's other ones that are out there if we ever find one that is better. I think we're all completely open to that, but we need something that is implementable as well. So whether it's waterless urinals, dual flush toilets, the purple pipes that was mentioned by Ms. Hahn, the Green Team has its work cut out for it. And we know it's much easier to do this stuff at the front end than to try to redo buildings at the other end, just as we've been trying to do with solar installation and making sure people have the capacity for that. But today is a really big day in Los Angeles' history. I thank you all for being a part of it, all the people who have been already praised. But not only do I wake up excited, I'm going to go to sleep excited today, knowing that we passed this and that literally tens of millions of square foot feet of buildings will be going green. And two thirds of everything that's built into 2050 will be affected by where we are today with this ordinance. So everything beyond that, for that last third, I'm sure we can work hard to capture. And I want to thank Global Green and all the groups that have been a strong part of this. It was great to make history with you when we did a civic building standard for ourselves. Now to know the entire city is doing that is a proud day for all of us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Now we're going to, Mr. Clerk, it's completed the discussion. We'll open the roll.
Yeah, Mr. President, there is a new ordinance that had been circulated, and there is an amending motion by Councilmember Weisar that is just a report back.
A friendly amendment will accept that. Therefore, let's open the roll on these items, Mr. Clerk. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
All right. And a fourth with on that item? Ms. Perry?
I'd like to just ask for the record if item eight could go fourth with, please.
Item eight to go fourth with?
Yeah.
Okay. And we're also going to take another vote, members, to suspend the rules to send this fourth with to the mayor. Mr. Clerk?
Open the roll.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And if I could ask, Mr. Garcetti, if you would, why do you get all that city family back there? Get a little photo for the history of this, if you would. Next item.
Item 23 was called special for cards from the public.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, item number 32 is regarding special event fee waivers, and Zuma Dogg has been covering the special event fee waiver and the 500 to 700 million, excuse me. I think it's obvious we need to restart this once everything settles down.
Please continue.
All right. Now, you know what? This is not acceptable conditions for public comment, okay? I'd like to say that right off the bat. Now, special event fee waivers, okay, now that you got me all pissed off, what they do is they're giving, we got a 500 to 700 million budget deficit, and what they do is they're supposed, they waive, you know what? No, no, you know, just let it be said for the record, the city's screwing you guys, and I can't talk about it. Now shut up, everybody.
Sergeant, would you entertain the gentleman in a plane, the proper attitude he should have when he does public comment? Next item, please. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Next item.
Item 25 called special for cards from the public.
We're going to go to Van Nuys.
For what?
Donna Pearman, please.
For what? Fee waivers. No, ask the one.
Is this on fee waivers?
Hi, good morning.
Yeah, I want to talk on 23. Is this 23?
Go ahead, please.
Okay. How dare you do fee waivers when you're in such deficit? You talk about hurting the city employees, renegotiating their pay, having days off without pay, but you spend all this money on fee waivers every Tuesday, Wednesdays, and usually Fridays. We can't afford them. That's why you have all these fee hikes and our city's in deficit. Fee waivers are another sake of cow. With all these fee hikes, employees need more money, not less. Let's cut back on fee waivers or let's have the CRA pay for it. How about the city council paying for these events you think they're so worthy while you pay for it out of your pocket? I want to mention the grand opening Elsorino Community Center, Armenian Independence Day, UAV March, anyway, one was 4,570, one was 10,999, UAV March 6,430, Festival of Books 6,990. Let's see, anyway, let's cut back on these fee waivers, have the CRA pay for it. How about the city, oh yeah. I think the Daily News is wrong for the city employees to give back their newest raise. I want to mention, you can't punish city employees for their raises, hard fought for. We already passed Prop S, but it didn't help yet. Let's see. You didn't help, but you would have meter fees, trash fees, recreation fees, but you have fee waivers, fee waivers. These events are, these events look good for your reelection, makes you look good, your legacy. City employees will not renegotiate their pay. You cut down on fee waivers, get rid of the CRA just because we don't need them or no on the no-ho project. Let's get rid of the fee waivers or let's not hurt city employees. This is not right.
Thank you. Sharon Brewer on item number 23. Yes, will reconsider item 23 first? Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes on reconsideration?
14 eyes.
Thank you. Ms. Brewer on item number 23.
I thought we got passed over. Sharon Brewer, item number 23, special event fee waivers, nine totals, six with amounts, $32,123.10, three reimburse. We have one, CD 13, it's June 1st, $10,999, Armenian Independence Day, sponsor Armenian Cultural Foundation, and Eric Garcetti. We have one, CD 5, 4/26 to 27, $6,990.10, the Festival of Books, sponsor LA Times and UCLA. They have over 30 exhibition exhibitors, and if each exhibitor paid $23, fee waiver is gone, other sponsors, Borders, Target, Time Warner, and more. CD 13, 4/24, $6,430, UVA March. CD 6, 5/18, $1,278, Independence, Israel Independence Day, sponsor Israel Independence Day Festival. You have street closures, DOT, but there's no mention of LAPD Fire Department Office of Public Safety. This $1,278 fee waiver will not cover having almost the entire Van Nuys Police Force for 14 hours. Last year also had eight motorcycle cops or the fire department or Office of Public Safety personnel. This event is one of those where dollars amount given doesn't come close to actual cost to the city. What's going out, what's the going hourly rate for LAPD officers times 14 hours for the Van Nuys Police Force? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 23 is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 23, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 eyes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 25 called special for cards from the public.
Yes, Ms. Donna Pearman on item number 25. Ms. Pearman?
Yeah. This is Donna Pearman. I forgot to say state employees only get five, six percent, five years, 1%. Anyway, I want to say to comment on 25, 26, 27, 28, actually, with a quick comment. I think it's ridiculous for making a Kate Linder Day in Hollywood, April the 10th, Michael Eisner, 25th, Hollywood, Stephen Schwartz on April 8th in Hollywood, Ruben Salazar Day in Los Angeles. Who's going to really think of these people on these days other than people who know them already? It's ridiculous. Did they give money to the city council reelection? I'm sure they must be really nice people, help their neighborhood, but it hurts to favor such a small portion of people. It's a feel-good, useless measure. How about you favoring city employees? Oh, once you care about city employees, five to six percent, low amount to help the city to get slapped in the face. No offense meant to these people, it makes no sense. It's silly as making Los Angeles the same capital of the world, which you'll probably do one day. I see no reason to favor these people, Mr. Garcetti, not at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 25 is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 eyes.
Thank you. That's item is approved. Could we please reconsider item number 20? Madam Clerk, please open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 eyes.
Thank you. Mr. Zuma Dogg, I understand you put a card in for that item.
Yes, thank you for that special red carpet treatment. This is a categorical exemption, okay? What's happening here is that the mayor is, we're having a 500 to 700 million budget deficit, and so the mayor is selling off chunks of the city, but unfortunately, not to the highest bidder, but to the, not even lowest bidder, but to the no bidder. The mayor is selling off a chunk of the city to the CRA, and it says here, without a bid. Okay, so when you sell something, you try to, if you do have to sell off chunks of the city, like a pawn shop because you're in Hock, at least try to get the most amount of money, not giving it away to the CRA at the lowest amount of money possible. And this whole thing's shady, because anytime I see the mayor selling something to the CRA without any bids involved, when you've got a budget deficit, you know, it's like Zuma Dogg when he needs some money and he's taking his stuff to the pawn shop and, you know, but this is even way shadier. And so let's see, yes, indeed, I think that says it all, y'all. But you know what? Excuse me. Excuse me, since I already ate until this minute, I may as well use it up. So I'd just like to say again that the mayor, through an arrangement with the CRA, is selling off chunks of the city. He's selling off chunks of property to the CRA, and they're not doing it for the highest bidder. So Zuma Dogg would say principles of economics. So Zuma Dogg would say principles of economics, if you are in a budget crisis and you are selling something, even though you shouldn't be, you should be getting the most amount of money, not the least amount of money, and that you go to the highest bidder, not the no-bidder. And when you see something with CRA, that's a big problematic agency. And I would like to say that I hope that city council should be very concerned about this, because as citizens and residents of the city, you have a mayor who knows he's a one-termer, and he's on the way out, so he's doing everything he can to skim the coffers and make all these deals. He's selling out the city, there ain't gonna be nothing left, it's gonna be a house of cards. Get this guy out of here!
That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number twenty, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen eyes.
Next item.
Item twenty-six called special for cards in the public.
Mr. Zuma Dogg.
Oh, boy. I like talking about important things, and I've dropped these types of items, but this is, um, Michael Eisner Day. The city of Los Angeles is gonna be declaring it Michael Eisner Day. Okay, that's Mickey Mouse's boss, okay? I wouldn't be declaring it, you know, it's just, he's a corporate executive. He was voted out by the shareholders for screwing up the Disney Company so bad, giant corporate parachute. I mean, I like his cable company, and I admire him as an executive, but should the city really be paying homage and turning over the keys of the city to Michael Eisner Day? How about LAUSD, We Teach Your Kids Day? How about you replace Michael Eisner with Student Achievement Day for all the kids who haven't dropped out yet and who are elevating the standards of LAUSD? How about, you know, hey, we watch your kids all day when you're at work day? How about paying tribute to some of the fine people that keep the city ticking instead of Michael Eisner, somebody who was voted out by the board and given a golden parachute and has nothing to do with anything? I say, strike this one down. And I would also like to add, I'm sure a majority of voters would choose Zuma Dogg Day over Michael Eisner Day. We'll find out at oh-nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk, if we could please actually take item number twenty-six and number twenty-nine and thirty-two at this point. Uh, Zuma Dogg was the only cards on those items, and he has used up his time today. So colleagues, twenty-six, twenty-nine, and thirty-two, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen eyes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item thirty-three called special for cards in the public.
Yes, Mr. Zuma did have a card on that item, but we also have Kathy Del Donna out in the San Fernando Valley.
Um, council members, um, I'll be... Try to be very short. We are asking for a no vote in this matter. You were recently sent a more thorough explanation of this case by Leonard Schaefer, who is Chair of the Tarzana Neighborhood Council. This property may be in... May... Is an Encino, but it is across the street from Tarzana, and has caused significant problems to Tarzana residents over the years. We've worked closely with the Encino Neighborhood Council on this matter, and they are fully supporting... They can't be here today, but they are fully supporting the ZA's decision in this case. The bottom line is that there are two properties next to each other, owned by the applicant. One is the sixty-one hundred Lindley, the preschool under consideration, and the other next door is a family daycare that is owned and operated by the applicant. According to the ZA and the APC, these are two separate businesses that should not be commingled. Um, they said that the applicant wants to... If they want to use the property legally for his preschool, uh, then the applicant needs to go back for another conditional use on this next-door property. We therefore feel that the closure between the properties is justified, and is a well-reasoned decision by the zoning administrator and the area planning commission. Please vote no on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here today. Amy Sai Shen.
Good morning, council members. Good morning, council members. My name is Amy Sai Shen. I'm an associate Jeffrey Engels Butler Marmarow, and our firm represents the Levy Family Partnership, who support this motion. I'm here today to respectfully request that this council assert jurisdiction and refer this matter to the Plumb Committee. This matter arose as a result of confusion at the South Valley Area Planning Commission, where a very important safety issue was overlooked. Currently, the parents of the infants and toddlers access an interior gate so that these parents can safely drop off their infants and toddlers at the adjoining facility. Lindley Avenue is a major secondary... Is a busy secondary highway, so it would be very dangerous for these parents of these infants to cross this busy street. And so we're here today to respectfully request this council assert jurisdiction to review this matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you, uh, for the members who are concerned about this. This is a matter of safety for children. The ZA disallowed the ability, as the lady said, to use a walkway between these two properties for the kids going from one daycare to the other. It turns out that out of the thirteen children in the one daycare, eleven will have brothers or sisters in the infant daycare, which is next door. To disallow us to use that entryway forces them to walk onto the public street, over to the other side of the property, to get into the infant daycare. It is a real safety concern and problem, and we want to correct that one issue, so I ask your support, send it over to the Plumb Committee through me that correction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. With that, let's prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Items thirty-four and thirty-five were called special by Councilmember Gruel and Alakon.
Okay. Um, Ms. Gruel, item thirty-four, thirty-five?
Yes, thank you very much, uh, Mr. President. Colleagues, and I know we have... Before we get started, I just want to thank ITA and UCLA. They prepared a briefing very quickly on short notice on this item, and that we thought it was very important for us to hear from our city's information technology experts before we made a final decision in support or opposition of the seven-four-seven overlay. Councilmember Alakon and I raised this issue, uh, months ago, when this first came out, and asked for public hearings, and then we recently heard last week that the PUC will be making their final decision on the overlay zone, um, over this next... Uh, excuse me, this Thursday in San Francisco. And I think the most important thing that Mr. Alakon and I were concerned about was making sure there was an open and transparent process, more so than anything else, and to ensure that there was a rationale for actually even having a new number or an overlay in that area. And particularly wanted to make sure that our valley residents who would be impacted by this could be heard on this issue. And so we sent a letter months ago, um, in behalf of our valley residents, asking... Stating the city's concern, and making sure that they held an open and transparent process. It is our understanding that courts made a recommendation that the new area code should be implemented as an overlay and not changing any of the valley's existing numbers. I think it is probably time that we've come to that we've run out of eight-one-eight numbers in the San Fernando Valley, and believe that, um, the open transparent process helps us be able to educate the public about that. I do have a few questions for ITA, um, and if you could, just share with us. One, was there enough public comment and hearings about this and the process? I think we were a little just surprised last week, when we did get a call from a local paper, that a decision had been made by the court and that the vote was happening this week, um, because there had been a very clear process, and a lot of my residents called to say, "We didn't know that this was happening." Not for or against, one way or another, but wanting to understand the rationale. Um, and so I would just like, uh, you to give us a little bit of feedback from ITA, and particularly asking for ITA to monitor, um, what is... What happens on April twenty-fourth. So if you could briefly just give us a quick overview.
Sure. Mark Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hold my time.
Mark Wolf with the Information Technology Agency. Um, as Councilmember Gruel has indicated, the FCC is actually the one that forecast prefixes in the eight-one-eight area code. They're the ones that indicated that, uh, the prefixes would be exhausted by fall two thousand nine, and the FCC is actually the regulatory authority over the numbering system. The California Public Utility Commission actually administers the rules and has limited authority. The FCC contacted the Public Utility Commission late two thousand six to commence the actual area code relief proceedings, and they were looking at two different options, a split or overlay option for the area, eight-one-eight area code, and they wanted to have this in place by prior to fall of two thousand nine, when they project we'll have the shortage. In two thousand seven, the FCC and PUC held five public hearing meetings and received over five hundred written comments from concerned individuals, business representatives, public officials, including, uh, Councilmember Gruel, and from the telecommunications providers. By a two-to-one margin, the comments that they received were in favor of the overlay remedy. The PUC issued their proposed decision, March twenty-fourth of two thousand eight, citing the overlay option as the most feasible for eight-one-eight, and that seven-four-seven will be the new area code. This decision is still preliminary, it's a proposed decision, and this Thursday, as Councilmember Gruel has indicated, is the actual date for the PUC's, uh, meeting where their commission will meet and vote on this matter. So based on the information that is available, we believe that the PUC and FCC did follow due process in conducting public outreach and providing for public opportunity to comment on this decision being made.
And did they notify us when the judge was making the decision?
They didn't contact the city of Los Angeles directly, but they did publish on their website in communications, as well as issue press release, that the proposed decision had been published, and that there would be a thirty-day comment period.
Do they normally notice? I mean, notify... Unless you're checking their website every day, would you... Would you noticed? I guess that was the... The main concern I had, uh, at the time, was that we read... We got approached by a reporter, um, that no other kind of notice had come to us, and that may, again, if it comes to ITA, and then ITA needs to let us know, but it sounds like there was not that notification?
To my knowledge, um, they did not notify us, and it's not, uh, one... It's not a responsibility theirs to have to notify individual municipalities or other individuals interested. I think it's incumbent upon the individuals to follow.
To check every day. I mean, I think that's... Again, maybe, and this is not the form in which we can solve that problem, but I do think it is important, because, um, again, I don't think the constituencies look at their website every single day. If the press doesn't pick it up, then you don't know. I mean, we have a lot of noticing requirements here in the city, uh, for a variety of things that happen, and it might be something we can work with the PUC, and I'm sure they would be more than happy to ensure that that happens, uh, in the future. Colleagues, items you... We would receive, I think, uh, receive and file number thirty-four, which was our earlier motion, and then what will be for us is item number thirty-five. And I see... Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, question I have regarding some common sense. Do any jurisdictions have cell phones on one area code, residential phones, fax machines? Do they ever separate along the use of the technology versus if you have a cellphone or a fax machine or whatever, a computer? It's all interchange. Do we ever have anything across the country that has them separate? For example, you got a cellphone, it's this area code. You got a fax machine, it's this area code, where you would then maybe have enough, so you won't have to keep on doing these overlays and these splits. Does anyone have that in the country?
Councilmember Zine, I'm not aware of any, uh, any other municipality or state that has implemented such a program. That's something that we can have some dialogue with the Public Utilities Commission on, and I'd be happy to, uh, to convey your question to them and follow up and let you know what the response is.
I'm just curious to see, because it seems logical that many people are now giving up their home phones, the landlines, and using cell phones, and as the cell phones continue an increase in numbers, and the population numbers increase, multiple overlays, it'll become more and more confusing to the people. I know the impact on businesses, where they have to have stationary redone because of that issue, but I'm always thought about, wouldn't it be logical and sensible, if it's this area code, it's a cellphone, if it's this area code, it's a fax machine, if it's this area code, a computer line, some of those effects? If you could just let me know on that, and that might be something for them to review that if it hasn't been done.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Mr. Zine, when, uh, years ago, when the fax machines came out... Now, fax machines have fallen a little bit. Uh, haven't they missed ITA? Fax machines are out of, uh, flair now?
Yes, that is correct. Primarily, uh...
Right.
More and more, they're dwindling use, and email is definitely the predominant way of communications.
Right, so more and more. Let me ask you a question. On a standard rotary phone or a push-button phone, how many numbers is that? You're with ITA, right?
Yes, I am. I would say you've got, uh, a total of ten numbers.
Oh, no, I think it's, uh... I don't count a nine of numbers. Beachwood five, seven, eight, five, one, what is that number there? How many numbers is a standard number? It's, uh...
Oh, a standard...
Standard, standard, yeah.
A standard number is, uh, seven.
Seven.
Seven digits, plus the area code is three, and if you're dialing the one in front, that would be a grand total of eleven.
Well, just on seven numbers, how many combination numbers do you have?
To be honest with you, Councilman, I don't know what that number...
Will you find that out, foreman? Because I think everybody would like to know...
Sure.
You know, on that issue there. I do think it's important to look at the cellphone option for people. And Mr. Zine mentioned it, I mentioned it when this came up before others mentioned it's not a new idea, but why the PUC is not looking at that, I don't know, because people are... When I gather it, because I think it is important to have numbers in the same area from that. I remember when they split eight-one-eight, you know, then three-one-oh came along, five-six-two, and now this is another one. And seven-one-four busted up to nine-four-nine and et cetera, nine-oh-nine, all those numbers. So if you could find out. And what impact it would have on emergency services with this number? Would that have any impact on emergency service time-wise? So you know my number, don't you? Three-three-seven? So you called me with my... Those answers there, and, uh, we're gonna vote on this here. Uh, I don't... This... Sometimes you've seen this happen so many often... So often that there hasn't been any change, and, uh, Ms. Gruel, you'll write, this hasn't been something that was bantered about, uh, but on the overlay. So if you would find that out, I'd like to know.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. With that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll.
And, Mr. President, there's been a recommendation to receive and file both items.
Well, that sounds like a good recommendation. Let's go ahead and move on receiving and filing. And prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Received and filed. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there is a special one, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney on the findings.
Thank you, Mr. President. On April nineteenth, security guard Hernan Cardona was shot and killed at an AutoZone store at nineteen-oh-five South Western Avenue at ten PM. Immediate action is required to apprehend the suspect for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-four point two, before considering the substantive motion to offer the reward.
Anybody else on the findings? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right. That is now before us. Mr. Wesson.
Mr. President and members, uh, this was a tragic situation. This individual was shot at a location that's directly across the street, or almost directly across the street from my district office. He was a good man, just trying to do his job, so when we approve this motion, I just hope that anyone that has any information would please, uh, contact the Los Angeles Police Department, so I ask for an eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Let's go ahead and open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. We'll send that forthwith without objection. Next order of business?
Mr. President, that does leave the closed session items, and the city attorney is recommending that item thirty be sent back to Budget and Finance.
Oh, he is, is he? Does anybody object to that? Seeing none, let's go ahead and refer that back then to Budget and Finance. And now, in accordance with California state law, we will go into executive session and closed session to discuss legal matters before the city council. Any votes that are required in open session, we'll be doing as soon as we come out of closed session, and we will be back to also end the meeting. So, thank you all, and we will be back shortly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. And we have to go and take those votes in open session now for the closed session items. If we can take the first one, Mr. Clerk?
On item 31, there's a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $275,000 in the case entitled Jose Canino versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay, please open the roll on the recommended settlement, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved, next item?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests be excused to leave at noon on April 23rd and May 7th, both for city business. A motion is required for the April 23rd date.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, for moving, and Ms. Gruel for seconding it without objection. Those excuses are granted.
Councilmember Zine requests be excused Tuesday, April 29th, to leave at 11:30 for city business. A motion is required.
Right back at you, Mr. Zine, I'll move it. Mr. Smith enthusiastically seconds it without objection. Next...
Councilmember Weiss requests be excused June 3rd and 4th for city business. A motion is required.
Is there any motion? I'll move that, Mr. Ms. Hahn seconds that objection.
Councilmember Weiss requests be excused June 24th, 25th, and 27th for personal business that meets council policy.
Okay, his excuse.
And Councilmember Alacon requests be excused May 20th and 21st for city business that also meets council policy.
All right, his excuse.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements of a business nature? Any announcements of a business nature? If not, do we have any adjourning motions today? We do. If I can ask everybody to please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Smith, you have?
Okay, Mr. Rosenthal. Thank you, Mr. President. This is for Raymond Ray Martin Kenaby. Don Kenaby's father passed away last Friday. Ray Kenaby passed away peacefully at the age of 90 on Friday, April 18th, 2008, in Meridian, Idaho, with his entire family at his bedside. Don and I talked about it yesterday. There was full closure there with his brother and his sister. Ray was a loving husband, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather. Ray and his wife Lucille Herman Kenaby celebrated their 67th wedding anniversary in November. Ray was born at Makawha, Illinois, in 1917. Ray and Lucille spent their early married years in Morton, Illinois, before moving to Rock Island, Illinois, where he worked for J.I.K.E.S. Tractor Company. He eventually moved to Southern California, working for Western Gear Corporation until his retirement. The Kenabys lived in Hacienda Heights, California, and Bakersfield, California, for 42 years before moving to Idaho to live with their daughter Lynn in Meridian, Idaho, for the past three years. Ray was a registered professional engineer, an accomplishment he was extremely proud of. He was meticulous craftsman, whether it was metal or wood. Ray was a mason and a member of the American Society of Manufacturing Engineers. He was a veteran of the United States Navy during World War II. Ray loved his family and was a true patriarch. Ray is survived by his loving wife Lucille, his three children, Don of Ceritos, who we know as a county supervisor, Lynn of Meridian, Idaho, and Keith of Bakersfield, California. Nine grandchildren, eight great-grandchildren, with the ninth on the way. May he rest in peace.
I know Ms. Hahn was very close as well with the Kenaby family. I'd like to add you.
I just certainly want to second that and want to extend my deepest sympathies to Don and Julie. It's tough to lose a father, no matter what age, and I know I will always remember Don's extreme kindness to my family when my dad passed away, and it was through Don's effort that we came up with the idea of having the county flag be on my father's casket, and that was because of Don. So, I do remember how kind he was to me when my own father passed away, and so I just want to tell him that, as you said, it was great that they had some closure. Certainly, his father had to be extremely proud of Don all these years, so my best to John and Julie and to all the family.
We'll do all members on that one.
I tried to second it.
Yeah, co-introduced and then all members. Any other adjourning motions? Ms. Hahn again, and then...
She can go first.
Okay, Ms. Gruel?
I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Francis Goff, passed away on April 13th, 2008, after a long life at the age of 92. Francis was born on June 2nd, 1915, and moved to California with his wife in 1949, where he obtained his master's and doctorate degrees with honors in education with a vocational education specialty from UCLA. He and his wife Grace were married for 69 years, wow, until she passed away in 2006. He was also named to Phi Beta Kappa honorary fraternity. He lived in Westchester for 30 years and was a senior manager at TRW Defense and Space System Groups for 20 years before retiring. He was also a consultant to the U.S. Air Force and other... After retirement, was director of development for the Semester at Sea Program. Francis and his wife had a keen interest and been active in politics going back to his early years, when he'd lived and campaigned with one of the party candidates for governor of Illinois. His wife Grace was the campaign manager behind Councilmember Pat Russell's successful bid to the city council. He had been telling his family he'd still be around for a while because the current presidential campaign was so interesting that he wanted to find out what happened on Election Day. The memorial service was held on Saturday, April 19th, 2008, at the Presbyterian Church of the Master in Mission Viejo. He was survived by four children, William Lee Goff, Tatyana Goff, the wife, Nancy Jean Goff, Susan Ann Steinbach, Jim Steinbach, the husband, and Deborah Goff Calvo, who I went to UCLA with, and her husband Angel Calvo, those of you that know, works here in the city of Los Angeles and EAA. He had seven grandchildren, Edie Sartan, Whitney Gaunt, husband, John Robert Sartan, Sarah Goff, Peter Goff, Serena Steinbach, Sarnon Steinbach, Liv Steinbach, wife, and Elizabeth Grace Calvo, Angel and Deborah's daughter. So, I ask that we adjourn in their memory, and may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
I'd like to adjourn today in memory of Craig Burris, who passed away last Thursday. He was only 60 years old. Craig was a dear friend of mine that I got to know when I was involved with the Landale Rotary in the 90s. Craig was a lifelong South Bay local. He's been so involved in the community. He was president of the Landale Rotary Club, president of the Landale Chamber of Commerce. He was a member of the Landale Planning Commission. He served as a Landale school trustee. He opened his own insurance company 22 years ago called Farmer's Insurance Company. He was a staunch youth sports advocate. He was especially important to the region's football scene. He was a commissioner of the Pacific Coast Youth Football Organization, which he founded in 1987, and in 2002, he was inducted into the American Youth Football Hall of Fame. Craig unfortunately had a series of unfortunate things happen to him when he went to the hospital just recently for a gallbladder operation, and it turned bad, and he actually slipped into a coma. I was able to go by and see him last week, I'm glad I did, but he was in a coma at the time. But Craig was one of those who really thought always about the young people, particularly in Landale, always tried to figure out how to give them more opportunities, always tried to figure out how to get them involved in activities that would give them positive choices in life. Craig will really be missed. It's really sad for all of us that knew him, that his life came to an end so soon. He's survived by his wife of 22 years, Kathy. He had three sons, Joe, Joey, and Rob. He's had a daughter, Jennifer, and four grandchildren, Daniel, Karina, Jake, and Anthony. Craig's brief time on this earth, really, I think, had a lasting impact on probably more people than he realized.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. And lastly, colleagues for Councilwoman Perry, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Ms. Carlotta Ewing. Ms. Ewing passed away on Wednesday, April 9th, 2008, a dedicated educator of 31 years. She was a graduate of Crenshaw High School, class of 1968. She graduated with honors and continued her pursuit of educational excellence at Pepperdine, where she earned a BA degree in English. After receiving her teaching credential from Cal State LA, she entered... Sorry, she became a teacher and was known as a young vibrant educator, purposed with the task of educating all children. She started teaching at Manual Arts High School in 1981 as an English teacher. She became affectionately known as a no-nonsense teacher who demanded excellence from all students. She was a strong supporter of school reform, a lifelong learner who constantly empowered her students to believe that all goals were achievable through hard work. Although she's no longer present in physical life, her spirit and legacy will continue to live through the many lives that she touched throughout her work. We'd like to adjourn in memory of a great teacher, Ms. Carlotta Ewing. And with that, Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. We will next be in session tomorrow, Wednesday, April 23rd, here in council chambers. Have a great day. Bye-bye.